We call the meeting to order. Welcome. Welcome to this public meeting of the Princeton Board of Education. Our mission is to prepare all of our students to lead lives of joy and purpose as knowledgeable, creative, and compassionate citizens of a global society. The Board is an elected unpaid group of ten citizens who set policy and make decisions on educational, financial, and personnel matters for the Princeton Public Schools on behalf of all residents. We are always pleased when members of the community attend our meetings. The Board and the school district operate under applicable New Jersey law and under regulations of the New Jersey State Board of Education. Each meeting includes an opportunity for those attending to comment on items on the published agenda or other matters of interest to them. The Board reserves the right to limit the time allotted to public participation. Law limits discussion of individual personnel and confidential matters. We desire that our meetings provide useful opportunity for communication between the Board and the community. Thank you for attending. I'll ask our secretary to read the legal notices.
Surely. As required under the Open Public Meeting Act NJSA 1046 at sequencha, adequate notice was given for calling this meeting. It was authorized by the Board of Education and forwarded to the municipal clerk Princeton Packet and the Times on January 9th, 2020, and distributed to the schools and others on the standard distribution list. The Board reserves the right to enter into executive session during all meetings of the Board of Education. Board Policy 2230 Recording Devices requires that we inform those attending this meeting that the proceedings are being recorded on video. This meeting is being video recorded and may also be livestreamed. However, this evening it is not being livestreamed due to technical difficulties, but the recording, we believe, is intact. The representative of the sending district is authorized to vote on such matters that affect sending district students or affect the governance of the Princeton Public Schools. As more specifically designated in NJSA 18A 38 8.1, in the event that this statute is amended, the law shall take precedence over this bylaw. Sending district votes pertaining to personnel actions refer to high school, central administrative, and district-wide staff only. Votes otherwise are considered abstentions.
I'd like to request a roll call.
Absolutely. Beth Barron.
Here.
Debbie Bronfeld.
Here.
Dan Dart.
Here.
Jess Deutsch.
Here.
Betsy Baglio.
Here.
Brian McDonald.
President.
Michelle Tuck-Ponder.
President.
Peter Katz.
Daphna Kendall.
Here.
Susan Cantor.
Here.
We have a quorum.
First item is adoption of minutes, item one. Adoption of minutes for organization of board meeting, January 6th. Can I have a motion? Jess, Jess, second. Brian, all in favor of those minutes?
Is that unanimous?
Looks unanimous.
Okay.
Motion pass?
Motion passes.
The second item of business is the student board members' report. Charlie?
All right. Good evening, everyone. So, for those of you who were just elected or who don't know who I am, my name is Charlie Biggs. I'm a senior at Princeton High School. And along with another senior, Mateo Konstantin, we're the student representatives on the Board for this year. And so basically tonight, we're going to start by just outlining some of the things that Student Council has been working on since our last meeting, and then we're going to just go deeper into another issue that we wanted to discuss. So currently, the Student Council is beginning planning for our next day of community service. This is a full-day event that's not until May, but right now, we're just starting to pull together several activities, including a blood drive, sandwich making for the soup kitchen. We're doing PHS Rocks again, and we're facilitating a lot of smaller events held by the different community service projects run by students at PHS. Additionally, in the spirit of Stu Coe's themes of school-wide engagement and community building, we're meeting on Thursday to begin brainstorming for some more school-wide events. We think that the lack of, like, school-wide engagement and a sense of community is an ever-present issue at PHS. And for months, Student Council has been planning, organizing, and conducting outreach for this highly anticipated Mr. PHS Male Beauty and Talent Pageant, but unfortunately was canceled at the last minute because one contestant dropped out, leading to almost all of the contestants dropping out. So, so in our next meeting, we're planning to use the data collected in our last survey where we looked at several factors that cause students to either attend or stay away from different school social events so that we can better tailor our next events to the preferences of the student body. And well, so information like this tends to lead people to jump to the conclusion that PHS is lacking school spirit. But Mateo and I agree and have said in previous meetings that the clubs, the student-run groups, sports teams, and the other extracurricular programs at PHS are where our, like, huge amounts of school spirit actually lie. And we think that we can harness that, like, passion and school enjoyment that students derive from their clubs and extracurriculars to make our events more widely attended. But the problem that came up when we were having this conversation, which is something that we, was discussed at a Board forum leading up to the elections in November, was that a lot of these clubs are not, are accessible to too few students. So, as an example, I'm just going to quickly look at, this is a student-run and organized team that I've been a part of for all four years in high school. It's Model UN. So each year, members of the MUN team travel around competing at different conferences. But each of these conferences can range from $200 to over $600 to attend. And prices like this are burdens on students who compete in many other clubs, including science, Olympia, JSA, speech and debate. And like, by looking at these clubs, you can tell that they don't reflect the racial or socioeconomic diversity at PHS. And as the district discusses these potential renovations and upgrades that could be coming to our schools over the next few years, we think that internal issues like this not only fit into our themes of community building and school-wide engagement, but they deal with larger issues like equity and student achievement that are really important to keep a focus on. Mateo and I have been brainstorming ideas on how to kind of alleviate this issue. We've been discussing it with certain members of the faculty and the rest of Student Council, and we'd be really happy to hear if any of you had thoughts about this. Thank you.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Charlie. The next item is item F, harassment, intimidation, and bullying. The first item is a consent. Do we need to move through that, or? The second item is the biannual harassment, intimidation, and bullying report acceptance. And I think that's-
It actually has to be discussed.
That's got to be a per-
Okay.
Steve?
Can we put the slide up on the screen? Is that possible, Kirk? The student safety data report?
Is that in your report?
It's, no, it's not in my report. It's actually on the, on the agenda.
F2.
Give me a minute, please.
So, as Beth mentioned, twice a year, each district in the state of New Jersey is asked to report on what used to be called violence and vandalism. It's now student safety. It includes HIV cases, harassment, intimidation, and bullying, as well as any violence, vandalism, suspensions, those kinds of things. So, we do it for period one, which is September through December, and then we do it again at the end of the year. The slide you're about to see is, shows a comparison of our data over time for the last three years.
No.
Nope.
Okay, I'm sorry.
F2.
Down here.
F2.
Right there.
There you go.
There we go.
Thank you.
The first thing I would point out, this is comparison for the Princeton Public Schools, period one, this year, last year, and prior years. But I should point out that if we were to compare our overall numbers with that of other districts in Mercer County around the state, they are substantially lower to begin with. So, suspensions may average around 10% for other schools, 10 to 12%. We are below 1%. So, the numbers are very small, but those numbers represent actual, they represent students, and they represent kids that we, that we know and that we know well and we work with, with them, regardless of what mistakes they may, they may make. And I think it's important to point out this year that what stands out for us is that our numbers are even lower. If you're looking at our total number of suspensions, for example, the second to last line, we had eight, eight student offenders in these first few months versus 25 in the, in the prior year. So, we're at about 0.2%, two-tenths of 1% in terms of our, our overall suspensions. And we would like to believe that some of that is a result of, we had some increases in suspensions when we had higher levels of vaping going on in our schools. And I would like to believe that the education that we've been doing with, with our students, both in school and within the community and at home, has, has seen a decrease in suspensions related to alcohol and drugs. And also, we have, as part of our district-wide goals, we've been focused on restorative practices and restorative justice. And so, we know from, from the research that suspension is not always the best consequence to really help kids learn and grow from the mistakes they may make. And so, our use of restorative practices, I think, has also helped us reduce the, the number. So HIBs are about the same as they were, suspensions are significantly lower, and I hope that the trend continues into the spring. Any questions from the Board? Yes?
First of all, congratulations. I think that these statistics are reflective of a lot of the work that we've been doing around restorative justice and education and a lot of the positive actions that we've been taking. So, I think that's a great thing. I do, I have a question about these categories. Are these state-defined categories?
Yes, they are.
Okay. Because, and if anybody from the state is watching, what I want to comment on, as we talk about school-to-prison pipeline, I think the language we use is important as well. And when we characterize students as offenders, I think that's a label that can, some people can carry with them for a long time. So, state of New Jersey, you might want to rethink these categories.
Thank you, Ms. Tuck-Ponder.
Okay.
Okay.
Any other comments? Great. Thank you, Steve. That takes us to my comments. And I'd just like to welcome everyone to this meeting again. Welcome to the January 28th regular meeting of the Board of Education of the Princeton Public Schools. We appreciate your joining us tonight. Around our Board table, we welcome continuing member Debbie Bronfeld, returning member Daphna Kendall, and Susan Cantor, who's joining us now for her first term. I also welcome my Vice President, Michelle Tuck-Ponder, and I'm happy to have her sitting next to me up here. I know we are all looking forward to working together on behalf of our students, who are always at the center of our work. Tonight, we will hear about efforts to build community at PHS and the jam-packed agendas of our Board committees as we begin another year of Board work in pursuit of equity, improved student experience, safer and more comfortable learning spaces, enhanced stewardship of district buildings and finances, and better collaboration and communication with our families, with our staff and teachers, and with our community. I'd like to provide a quick update on the community planning session that was held last Saturday on January 25th. Despite the pouring rain, we were pleased to welcome over 160 participants from across our community who heard from our planners and provided input on the future of our public schools. The planners presented extensive data on enrollment history and trends, and on the capacity and state of our school buildings. This presentation is available on the PPS website, together with a survey link, which is open through February 10th, where we invite all community members to share their priorities for our schools and to join in the conversation. Additional opportunities for engagement will follow as the planners solicit input, develop alternatives, and work towards a final report to the Board by the end of June. Also posted on our website is an analysis of the school impact of the Affordable Housing Settlement approved in December by the Princeton Council. The settlement details how Princeton will comply with court-ordered affordable housing obligations required under the New Jersey Constitution. It provides for 880 new residential units to be built through 2025, which are projected to generate 329 new school-aged children. This Board appreciates that this final settlement contains a variety of housing types, including senior housing, and results in a significantly lower school impact than the plan that was initially proposed two years ago. We are grateful to Bob Powell, a citizen expert and Riverside grandfather, for donating his time to prepare this, this school impact analysis for this district. The Affordable Housing Settlement is one of several drivers impacting enrollment trends that have been considered by our planning consultant. How we balance community growth with great public schools remains an open question, with continued analysis and conversation in the months ahead. We look forward to working closely with the community to define a future that reflects our mission and the community's values, preparing students for lives of joy and purpose while respecting affordability, equity, and sustainability. It's a tall order that requires all of our voices and a collective spirit. Thank you. I'd like to do gratitude next, if we could, Jess.
Sure. So, we continue our gratitude practice as a way of acknowledging many acts of kindness and generosity that contribute to the mission of PPS. This month, the gratitude mailbox is officially open and continues to be accessed by members of our staff, faculty, parents, and community. Until we confirm permissions from the gratitude centers, I won't name them, but I will share the gratitude they wanted to offer. First, to Dr. Ginsberg for the warm, welcoming, inclusive environment he creates for JP children and their families. To the PHS counseling staff, from a member of that staff, who is grateful that her colleagues regularly uplift her. From a parent, recognizing the importance of her child's counselor, counselor relationship. And all the school office staff for their patience and responsiveness to parents' inquiries. To the PHS custodial staff, from a teacher who recognizes exceptional helpfulness and team orientation, making so many activities at the school possible. And there was even one to us, the Board, from a citizen who wanted to recognize our volunteer efforts on behalf of our community and children. I am grateful for the gratitude and grateful for this opportunity to publicly express it. Gratitude mentions can be submitted to gratitude@princetonk12.org.
So again, that's on our, our website. There's a place for people, if you want to write to us and thank somebody that you have a special gratitude to. We'd, we'd be happy to see it, and we'd be happy to share it at our meetings anonymously or however. Thank you, Jess. Did you want to add something in gratitude?
I'll do it during my report.
Okay, great. So the next item is, I think I just need to announce the committee chairs and members. A list of our committees, the chairs and the memberships is available. It's attached to the Board Agenda, and so I direct you there for any questions. It's also on our website.
I have a comment on that?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. I feel our committee should have the most experienced members chairing and co-chairing them. Therefore, I'm requesting that the Board have co-chairs for the Finance Committee for 2020. I've served on the Board for three years and been through three school board budget cycles. Experience and seniority should be valued and considered. We need clear transparency and should not fill committees based on loyalty. The 2019-2020 budget was balanced based on staff cuts. The Finance Committee needs to focus on priority-based budgeting as we move into our 2020, 2021 budget. Thank you.
Thank you. So that was a, that was an information item for the public?
Yes.
So now we, I guess, thank you Debbie for that. I think we move on to the, Steve, it's your comments.
Okay. Thank you.
Great.
Give me a second.
That's okay, Kirk. Take your time. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to, those of you who are here tonight, welcome to those of you watching at home. This is our first televised meeting of the new year.
Sorry. It's been a great night tonight.
Yeah.
Kirk, is the meeting being televised?
Unfortunately, we're not streaming tonight, but we are recording it, and it will be posted tomorrow.
It's not live, but people will be tuning in, I'm sure. So in the, in the spirit of gratitude, I actually want to begin my comments tonight with a statement of gratitude for the life of Rabbi Adam Feldman. As I know everyone here is aware, Adam passed away suddenly and much too young on December 24th over the, the winter holiday. And our thoughts and prayers continue to be with his family, with the Jewish Center, and with all those within this community and honestly around the world who are mourning his loss. Adam was a remarkable friend to, to me and to the schools. I will always remember him as a source of wisdom and calm and joy. And he was the kind of person you just felt better in his presence. So I met Adam the first month I began as a superintendent, which was more than six years ago. I had reached out to, to he and to Pastor Dave Davies, who were the leaders of the Clergy Association, because I felt we had a common mission of supporting children and families. And they both became fast friends, mentors, and confidants, and the two of them would, would show up at, at odd times in my office, sometimes on the first day of school, which sort of made sense. Sometimes when they saw my name in the paper too much, they would be there. Just to say, they were thinking of me, and they were there in times of joy and in times of, of difficulty. Over the course of the past few years, some of those difficult times involved acts of antisemitism. And in each instance of those acts involving our students, my first call was always to Adam. He had a vision for the world as a place of peace, and he saw learning and relationships as the pathway to that vision. When our community was reeling from a widely-publicized act of antisemitism, Rabbi Feldman brought to us a Holocaust survivor to speak to our students at the high school. He assured me she was just the right person to connect with our students. And he was right. She spoke of love, of courage, of healing, and of hope. I believe Adam himself personified those values in every interaction I had with him and watched him have with others. He spoke with conviction, listened with compassion, and acted with love. He did it with individuals, with organizations, and with communities. Antisemitism and hate of all kinds continues to be on the rise. It is a darkness that threatens to overwhelm us, but in the face of that threat, I would ask us all to think of Adam. Adam passed away at the beginning of Hanukkah, the Jewish Festival of Lights. The festival is, is celebrated with the lighting of the menorah, which contains nine candles, eight to represent the eight days, the oil miraculously burned in the temple. And then there's this night candle in the middle, which I believe is called the shemash. Shemash, thank you. And it's the candle that's used to light the other candles. And in the spirit of, of Hanukkah, I will always see Adam as the candle that lights the other candles. I ask that, that all of us who knew him can continue to pass on his light, and in the face of darkness, honor his memory with acts of love and laughter. He had a great sense of humor, and of healing, and of hope. So, thank you. I don't know if anyone who knew Adam wanted to make any comments? On the Board?
Thank you.
Okay. All right.
I'll just thank you for those kind words. I know at the Jewish Center, where I'm a member, it's been a very hard time for our community, so to know people are thinking of us and thinking of Adam is, I think, the most important thing. There was a lovely presentation at the MLK service, also speaking of Adam, and Reverend Davis mentioned, like, their association. So it's, it's nice to hear these stories of how he connected with so many people.
Okay. Well, in that spirit, actually, moving along, we, we talked about the, the focus that we have on restorative practices here in Princeton. And I want to actually frame my, my Board remarks, superintendent remarks, tonight within the context of the, the goals, the superintendent goals that, that I have this year. Not going to go through all of them in detail, but, but one of those goals, achieving equity through student achievement, has to focus on this idea of restorative practice, which is the small things, sometimes the larger things we do that pull us together as a community, students, teachers, staff, administrators, parents. And so, tonight, I want to mention two things. And I'm, I'm really fortunate to have with me this evening one of our esteemed science teachers from the high school, Stephanie Shoup, who's going to talk very briefly about an initiative that the high school began this year and that she, she was instrumental in getting started, where homeroom teachers actually engage intentionally in activities to, to bring kids together, have them get to know one another. So Stephanie, if you want to, do you have a PowerPoint you're going to?
I, I do. Do you want me to do it now?
You want you to do it now? Yeah, come on up. Yeah. Okay. All right.
You've got it, right?
Give me a second.
Yeah. I'm making it difficult for you tonight, Kirk, because now you'd have to toggle back and forth between mine and hers, but I, I have confidence that you can, you can do this.
I'm getting there.
Keep you on your toes, Kirk. Do I get a fancy clicker?
Yeah, you want, you can have this if you'd like, here.
I do. Thank you.
Yeah, appreciate it.
First of all, thank you very much for having me. I really appreciate it. I teach at the high school, and I teach science. So, I'm here to talk to you guys about this homeroom community time and the idea of we are PHS. So I'm going to hit you with some data for a little bit, and this is kind of why this is dated. No, 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 don't go anywhere.
No, we can see.
Just so everybody can-
Oh, I see, I see. I didn't mean to scare you with my data. Come back. So sorry. So these data are something that we kind of put together, and we realized that there is this trend in chronic absenteeism. So if you look at the gray, that is going to be the New Jersey state. And if you look over the course of several years, you can see that it's very stable. If you look at ours, you can see that there is an increasing trend. Now, these data were collected from different sources, but one of the main ones was the state website. If you're going to go ahead and look at the group of kids that are most affected, it's going to kind of be by us and the high school. It's the ninth graders, and the 10th graders, and the 11th graders, and the 12th graders. And this is not just a statewide trend, but it's a national trend as well. So, to kind of make this more about us, we started looking at the Stanford survey data, and we've got those from 2016, and we've got those from 2018, and we just took another one. I just don't currently have those data available. But the overarching theme is that our kids are stressed, that they're manifesting this stress in health and emotional issues. That is causing them to miss time in school. They're around three hours less of sleep than they should be getting for this age category. And then in 2016, the greatest group affected by the stress was the juniors and the seniors. But if you look at 2018, that kind of started to bleed over into the younger groups, into the sophomores. So if you compound that by looking at our AP numbers, now these are the numbers that Jess Baxter, our principal, put together. The jump from 10th grade to 11th grade, it's almost a three, around a three times fold. It's a pretty significant jump there in terms of how many APs.
Where's those numbers represented?
So these are the, the number of students that are taking APs. So in six, right, so there are six kids in 9th grade. There's 340 in 10. There's 900 in 11th grade, and then there's 720. So-
It's the number of tests.
The number, the number of kids?
It's, I believe it's the number of kids, because-
It's got, no, it's-
I'm sorry, it's the number of, yes, it's the number of tests. Yes. The ones on the other side are the number of, yeah, the number of students. Sorry. Yes. So, right. So those are the number of tests, right? The number of classes. And then over here, you've got these, the kids that are actually taking them. And if you look at the four APs, five, six, and seven, that's around 200 of our kids that are taking the equivalent of a college freshman or more. It's a lot of kids. So, we kind of realized that something was going on, and I, I wanted to find out if I was the only one that felt this way, or if the staff felt this way as, as well. So I threw out a survey to kind of find out how people felt. Did they think that having something that may be focused on wellness or resilience, talking about planning, executive functioning stuff, making a sense of community, do we think that that's important to our kids? And 65 to 80% of the staff said, yes, we do. And all sorts of research supports the idea that if you have a positive school environment, you are going to have less bullying, you're going to have fewer discipline problems, you're going to have less issues with drug and alcohol, and then of course, you're going to have less chronic absenteeism. So then we came up with this, let's create this homeroom initiative, because we have this time here to use, and we're not doing anything with it. So, we started creating these activities, and it comes down to basically the kids- And it comes down to basically the kids come in, we break them up into smaller groups by asking a question of the day. And in this case, the question was, where would you want to live? Would it be in a major city, a small town, a mountain, or an ocean? And then based off what they chose, they would go to different corners. And it would break the kids up into smaller groups. And then they were going to go ahead and do their activity. In this case, it was a life story sheet where they talked about their favorite book or uh, favorite childhood memory or some kind of adult in their life that really helped them out. They wrote their answers and then they shared them out in these smaller groups. And then to kind of scaffold this idea of restorative practices, we would have a, a circle time, which I think some of you guys participated in.
We did, yeah.
Okay. Um, so you ask this overarching question and then everybody shares their idea about it. Um, in this case, it was how do you think getting to know each other is going to go ahead and help build a community here at PHS? I also have an LMS where all of the information that we're going to be doing in homerooms, there's a digital copy for everybody to access. And I create videos to kind of walk people through, because you know, all sorts of different learners. So, um, try to help people see it visually if they wanted to.
LMS is Learning Management System.
Yes, thank you. So, the activities or some of them that we've run, um, engage in mindfulness because studies show that if you are mindful, wellness increases. Um, we've done meditation practices. We've written letters of gratitude, again, linked to increase in wellness. Talked about wellness in terms of uh, budgeting your time because if, you really can't have wellness if you don't have executive function. Building a sense of community. And then, of course, that's sharing in the circle time. The activity that we're going to be doing tomorrow is based on how many classes our students are taking. So, I created a video that visualized for them a day. And it represented how we prioritize our day. There are bigger things in our life that we absolutely need. There are things that we enjoy and there are things that we want. And how we put them into this little jar that represented our day, led us into how much we could actually fill. And changing that order changes how much we can have and how effective our day is. So, to help our kids kind of scaffold this, uh, Jess Baxter, our, again, our principal, she asked all of the teachers to give her a general idea of how long we think our homework takes in the classes that we have. We put everything together in a document. And then we're going to ask the kids tomorrow to think about their schedule for next year. What are the courses that you think you're taking? Now go ahead and budget how many hours that course is kind of estimated to be for your homework. Don't forget, you still are a human. You have extracurriculars. You better spend some time with your family, right? And you have to have unstructured time. So, put that all out there and actually calculate how much time is left. Are you over the 24-hour day or are you under? And maybe we need to cut back a little bit. So, these activities are kind of geared to this idea of trying to increase their self-awareness to help them make better decisions, to help them plan a little bit more effectively, to build in protective factors like mindfulness and gratitude. Um, we have a PEF grant, which we are really excited about because it's helping a lot in terms of procuring materials because buying something for an entire school is not exactly easy or cheap. So, um, that's wonderful. The project itself is supporting the idea of restorative practices, like um, we were saying. Um, knowing every child that we have. And it's increasing inclusivity because we're actually using our school-to-work program, which has been really lovely, I think. I'm biased, but I think so. Um, I asked for a teacher survey. So, this is a completely voluntary thing because, again, we weren't doing anything with our homeroom time. So, um, the staff reported that anywhere between um, 50% of them are, are doing this, 80 to 100% of the time using these activities. And the ones that did report using them are saying that they see a improvement in homeroom. So, it's a work in progress. Um, but, yeah, that's our goal. Thank you.
Hold on, in case people have any questions?
I have a question.
Oh, yes.
And I, just for people to understand, our homeroom, in the high school, the children have the same homeroom teacher for four years.
Yes.
Same homeroom section.
Correct.
So, it's an opportunity for them to be in this small group and do this kind of exercises.
Right, and then, exactly. So, we've got this little captive audience.
Right.
Yes.
So, there's a real relationship opportunity there.
Correct, well, and, and the, the issue that we were seeing is that the homeroom time, because our kids were so overscheduled, they wanted this just completely downtime. But we want to do something more with it and be a little bit more proactive. Um, to kind of put the cellphones down, which is not the easiest, and, you know, engage in these activities. Yeah, please.
Um, how many minutes this homeroom? And do you think it's long enough to do these activities successfully?
Um, okay, so the way that I kind of schedule the activities is I put almost too much in there because I want people to be able to kind of pick and choose. Uh, so right now, there is no differentiation between the freshman, the sophomore, the junior, and the senior. Because it's just a couple of us doing it. And it's really tough to come up with ideas, concepts, and make them work, right? Um, so that's a goal of ours, is to go ahead and get hopefully um, some support to make that happen. So, right now, it's just one outline. So, if a teacher would rather pick one of those pieces to do over the other, they can just jump right into the circle time. Um, so, right now, it's probably not enough time. But we also, in the high school, don't have homerooms like we typically had homerooms, right? We had homerooms every single day. We don't do that. We have homerooms once or twice a month. Yes.
In student achievement, we got to preview the time management worksheet that you just shared. And we were very excited about it. Um, I think it's a great tool. I think it allows students to really understand and make decisions. We were saying it's a great tool for parents as well.
Well, yeah, yeah, go ahead, no, go ahead.
I have two questions. One is, um, if 50% of homerooms are doing the activity, do you see a way that all students can have this experience to do that? And secondly, how can we make this available to their parents? So that when parents are encouraging different course selection, they understand the time constraints.
Right. I love it. Um, super good question. We're working on the first one. Um, we have to get people to buy in because honestly, it's, it's... How do I answer this? We're trying to get more people to buy into it. Um, so I think the differentiation piece, once we kind of get a year under our feet and we can start scaffolding for different needs, um, I think that will kind of lend itself. The feedback that I've been getting is that the juniors and the seniors are a little bit more resistant, even though they might be the population that need it the most. Um, but it might be, if you're looking for data, right? Science, data. Um, the idea is when you have a cultural shift, which this is probably going to be, it takes about two years to really get its footing. And then it takes about four years, which means this year's freshmen for it to really kind of solidify. So, we're working on that first aspect. The second aspect is Jess Baxter. Our high school principal has been emailing parents about this. Um, she has the video that I made, so I, I think that she sent that to, somehow made that public? Not yet.
We'll look for it, yeah.
Okay. Um, so the other aspect of that is she's also supposed to be sending an email blast out saying, hey, everybody, this is what we did. I know we don't have folders in high school anymore, but, you know, it's in your kid's folder. So, sit down at the dinner table and have a conversation about what you kind of plan on doing.
Do you think along those lines, that guidance counselors might be able to have them available during course selection?
Yeah, absolutely.
Meetings, so that if a child didn't complete it. And I think Susan actually had the idea at the meeting, could they ever be uploaded to Power School? Uh, that's just an idea, so that's something that.
These, these worksheets?
Yeah, that the parents actually could, students and parents could see.
Yeah, I can definitely, yeah, I can talk to somebody about that. Because I, I don't have the power to do that. But I can definitely talk to someone about that.
Along the same lines, and I want to thank you so much for this work, which I think is so important in terms of um, really supporting the culture that's reflective of the values that we talk about so often on this board and valuing student well-being as a part of um, preparing all students for whatever the next steps are going to be. And I just want to um, I guess underline the importance of looking at that. Um, I think the, the slide that you had on um, number of hours related to AP coursework and really looking at that, I think will help parents especially to understand that more APs is not necessarily deeper engagement, which is actually the thing that would really prepare students for the next steps.
Well, we actually, so, homeroom is a small facet, right? It's, if you think about our entire education system, it's like a wheel, right? And there's lots of cogs going on in there. This is just a small little cog. There are lots of other things. There's a homeroom committee right now that's looking, uh, excuse me, homeroom. That's why I'm here. Uh, AP committee, where we're looking at potentially, how can we make this better? Because there is this infinite race. And the question is, where are we going with that? Are we putting people out there that are healthy and well and ready? Or are we kind of becoming part of the problem? So, I think that needs to be something, again, that's why I started with the data. I think we need to kind of make data-driven decisions and look at the facts and allow those to kind of speak for themselves and then go back and fix things. And that's what we're doing.
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much for sharing.
And I, yes, and I do need that back.
I thought about just running with it.
Yeah. I would have, I would have found you.
Yeah.
Yeah, alright.
That's true.
Thank you so much.
So, just building a little bit on what uh, on what Steph just shared. So, she referenced the Challenge Success survey um, that our students took in 2016, 17, and then 2019. Um, we just got that data back. Um, I'll give you a little teaser. Um, there's a lot of data, a, a lot, more than we've ever had before and they're presenting it in different ways. Um, our students are reporting getting more sleep. So, you saw six and a quarter and it's, it's not where it needs to be. It's not at nine, which is what the, what would be recommended, but it's, it's at seven. Um, and they're reporting doing a, a little bit, spending a little less time on homework. So, the, the, the good news is that there is going to be a presentation. Um, I know that um, uh, the principal, Ms. Baxter, is going to be coming to the Student Achievement Committee at some point, I think the end of February perhaps. Um, but on March 23rd, um, John Kleiman from Challenge Success um, is going to be um, doing a presentation here in Princeton for, he's going to actually be working with the staff during the day, during the afternoon. And then in the evening, he's going to do a special presentation for parents on our data. Um, and what are some, um, some highlights and some areas for focus, but specifically in terms of um, of the work that parents can be doing um, to help us uh, have kids who are truly leading lives of joy and purpose, so. March 23rd.
Great.
Okay.
And Steve, if you're, if you're offering teasers, stress? Do you have a preview on the stress numbers?
I don't. I don't.
Well, they're getting more sleep, so.
Well, they.
And it's homework, so.
Right.
Just have to wait.
You have to, yeah. We'll get, we'll get more data soon. Um, so, sort of staying in the same vein, thank you so much. Um, this happens to be um, the world Great Kindness Challenge Week. Um, the last week of, of January. So, we are two days into the Great Kindness Challenge. Um, last year, 115 countries around the world participated. Um, this is our first time participating as a full district. So, every school is focused on um, this kindness challenge. Um, and they have motivational signs up in the building. I think this is, these are from uh, JW, actually, the Monday quote and Tuesday quote. One from um, Dr. Martin Luther King and the other from Albert Einstein. And I think there's one from Lady Gaga in the middle. And they're also, they have a list of things that they can do to promote kindness. And they can check them off, um, and sign their name. And, and so there's a, a long list. And it's, some of them are, are simple. Um, one of them actually ends up like to send a note of thanks to your superintendent. I did notice that on here. Um, we should add board members to this. Um, compliment five people, make a new friend. Um, say hello to your, help, offer to help your custodian, sit with a new group of kids at lunch, read a book to a younger child, step up for someone in need. Um, help your PE teacher with the equipment. Um, so, give someone a high five, um, offer a handshake to somebody new. So, I'm just going to ask this, to just uh, do any act of kindness to the people around you. If you want to just introduce yourself to someone new, you can smile at someone, that's on here. Um, you can give yourself a high five, that is okay. Go ahead, take two minute, one, 30 seconds. Anything, high five, okay. Alright.
Hello.
I knew it was a word.
I've lost complete control.
Yeah.
This is how our board should be.
Do you have an organ? Can you?
I don't know how to get this one back. Okay.
Should I hum really loud?
Okay.
Alright.
That was lively. Uh, we should do that every meeting, um.
Come, come back, Steph, now.
Yep. I'll be back. Okay. Alright, so moving along, staying still under goal one, the other goals will go faster. Uh, they might not be as exciting, but they're, they'll, they'll go a little bit faster. Um, we are engaged in, as, as part of our focus on, on equity um, and differentiation, focused in uh, on a special education program review. We've actually, this is the culmination of a three-year goal where we've really been looking at, at special education. Um, and so, we are, and much like we do program reviews in science and social studies and language arts, we are taking a look at our um, special ed programs and, and the full range of those programs, pre-K through 12 and beyond for our special needs kids. Um, we are partnering and doing this work with um, PCG, Public Consulting Group, that has done um, this kind of evaluation in districts actually around the country, but they actually are based here in Princeton. Um, so, they're around the corner, which helps us. Um, and the purpose is to help us advance equity and differentiation to meet the needs of our students with special needs with consistency, care, and cost effectiveness. So, they're actually looking at all aspects of our, of our program. Um, and they've got various phases. So, the project initiation phase, they'll be um, uh, meeting not only with a steering committee of, of folks, and we've been um, really helped in this, in this work with our special ed PTOs. We have parents who are, will be part of that steering committee, staff, administrators, teachers. They'll be meeting with that steering committee as well as with the larger community just to sort of kick off and explain the process. Um, they will then be refining, they have four research questions um, and then identifying the data for those questions. And uh, I'm not going to read, they're kind of technical, but um, question one has to do with, how does the district's continuum of special education services and general education experiences? So, this is looking at both special ed and general ed. Support of free and appropriate public education. How are inclusive, inclusive practices employed? Do these practices support students throughout their school day and lead to access to higher level in college prep courses? How does PPS support students through transition planning for post-secondary education employment? That's question one. Question two has to do with finance. How are funds budgeted? What are the major cost drivers? How does PPS special education spending compare to peer districts? So, we'll be benchmarking with peer districts. Question three is really looking at um, the data. Um, how do we measure effectiveness using qualitative, quantitative data about um, students from families, from educators, to make long-term and systematic improvements? How do we foster a culture that's focused on improving outcomes? And question four has to do with implementation of co-teaching models and efforts to meet the needs of students in the least restrictive environment. Um, and what factors are considered and implemented to support inclusive programming? Is effectiveness um, consistent across varying subgroups? So, they're going to be looking at, well, what data do we need for that? Um, and some of that data will be um, data on, that's on paper. Um, and a lot of the data is going to be uh, walkthroughs of classrooms, focus groups, surveys, um, and just hearing from the, the, the range of people within our, our community. Phase uh, four is the, then the development and presentation of findings. So, based on their collection of the data, they'll be analyzing it. Um, and then um, presenting uh, strengths and areas for improvement. And then finally, phase five will be the presentation of an action plan to the board. This work will begin, it's going to begin now and then um, will probably conclude into the fall of next year. So, we may not be able to get the full um, action plan until um, the fall of next year.
Can I ask a question in front of?
Uh, no. You could, we, we're.
Public comment's coming.
And I wanted to say to you.
of, some classes could be self-contained classes for students with, with autism, but then we also have students who are mainstreamed into our general ed classes. It's really about identifying learning differences, and then finding the ways to support those students to, to be successful within the, the least restrictive environment and to achieve their very highest potential.
Okay.
So, a lot of different, a lot of, there's a, a range of strategies that we're employing, and so that's what, one of the things we'll be looking at. Moving along.
Can I, can I, before we go?
So, sorry, yeah.
Yeah, for the special education program review, just to add on to your question, so this is, the district's legally required to provide special education services, it's federal law, and so that's what we're doing. About 16 to 18 percent of the children in Princeton public schools have what's called an IEP, which is an individualized education plan, and that governs what services the district has to provide them. So, given that so many kids in the district are receiving special education services, it's been a goal of this board for many years now to have a comprehensive review to ensure that we're providing comprehensive services, but also cost-effective, at a cost-effective method. I wanted to say that I'm extremely thrilled that the district, we've finally come to this point where we're doing a special education review, and I just wanted to point out, we also will have the results from this, and then we will also be looking at the results from the Stanford Success Survey. And something that Ms. Shipp had brought up was, the district or the high schools looking at ways.
Chronic absenteeism, sorry.
No, not the chronic absenteeism, the AP, how to make AP better.
Yes, yes, right.
And I hope that one of the things that's being looked at is inclusiveness of special education kids and also children of color in our AP classes, because as you recall, the equity report that was done, found that that's an area the district was a little deficient in, and that children with special needs and children of color were underrepresented in our AP classes. And so I hope, I don't know.
It is, it is one of the research questions.
No, in the AP review that's happening at the high school.
Oh, the AP review, yeah.
So I'm just saying, when, when things are being looked at, especially when they're being driven by the Stanford Success Survey, there's one point of view, which is, our kids are stressed, and they have a lot of homework, and we need to do something about that. But there's a whole other point of view that I always worry isn't being addressed, which is, what about these kids?
Yep.
Who need to be supported?
Right.
And what's being done for that?
Right.
So, you know, I hope that, I don't know if Ms. Shipp is still here, but I hope that is, I hope that is, I hope that's a focus of, of the committee's work, because it's, it's very, as important as it is to manage the stress of these kids who are taking five, six, seven APs, it's also important to ensure we're doing what we can to support these kids.
I agree.
Thank you.
Yep, thank you. Okay. Facilities stewardship was the second goal for the superintendent. I, I'm simply gonna just reaffirm and, and highlight what Beth had commented on in terms of our planning for growth, and just thank the members of the community who came to the, the session on the 25th, this past Saturday, and to emphasize that we will be having two or three more of those public forums. There's a survey that's out there, it comes up on our website as soon as you click on the website. There are actually cards that you can scan with a QR code that are out by the sign-in sheets, so if people want to take the survey that was prepared at the, at the forum on Saturday, they can do that and get that data back to us. Financial stewardship and sustainability, third goal. There are lots of elements to that. I want to comment very briefly on priority-based budgeting. So we, we had talked earlier, this, when we were presenting our goals, my goals, in, in August, September?
September.
September. We talked about shifting the way we do budgeting, and going to priority-based or strategic budgeting that's tied to our strategic plan and to our values. So the, the administrators and I are going through a process of kind of reeducating ourselves around priority-based budgeting with these five elements in mind. So clarifying and aligning priorities, so really connecting our spending to our, our priorities and our values. So an example might be, this year, as we're having budget discussions, and we're right in the heart of this process, elementary principals are saying, we really want to have more professional development around reading and writing workshop, and see if we can bring in someone from Teachers College to help our, our teachers take the good work that's being done already and take it to the next level. We know that there's a cost associated with that, what, what can we do within our current budget to reallocate funds to make that happen? So that's the kind of thinking that, that's, that's going on right now. Create a multi-year plan to shift resources, rather than thinking that we can make changes just one year to the next, we need to have a long-term plan and a long-term vision of our finances, and, and make some of those changes and shifts gradually. So with the reading workshop example, it would've been great if we could've provided the funding to do professional development for every single one of our K through five teachers or K through eight teachers all at once. We, we can't. So the, the hope, and again, the, the budget has not been presented to the board yet, but the hope is that we can look at maybe K through two in the first year, three through five in the second year, and do it over time. Reassess the, the budget process. So, the first thing is to try and start as early as we can. It's hard in the state of New Jersey, because we actually don't get the really important data from the state until right about now. Is that right, Matt? Like, this week, last week? We?
Yeah. They opened up the budget module yesterday.
Yesterday, yesterday. But we are going to, last year, we had a first budget workshop in March, and then the, the budget was voted on in April. This year, we're starting with a budget workshop on, I believe, February 11th. So we are beginning a month earlier with our discussions, and I know there will be discussion in the, in finance around where we are currently with the budget, and so we'll be talking to the community much more about it. Collaboration across schools and departments, rather than being siloed and saying, you know, science gets so much money, sorry, Steph, you know, science gets so much money, or social studies, or this school gets the same amount of money every year, it's like, how can we look across departments and across schools to, to focus our efforts? Measure academic return on investment, AROI. This was one that really resonated with the, the administrative team, what's working? So schools do a lot, we always seem to be adding more initiatives, it's hard to sort of take them away once we've started them, but really, what, let's look at the data, what, what is working, and let's put our money in those things that's working, and recognize that we may put money in something that doesn't work as well, and that we have to identify that, and then, and then shift funds if, if need be. Reading and writing workshop, again, a very good example where we have data to show that that is a, a program that has worked well for our students, and so the investment in that, I think, does make sense. And then finally, communicate to build support and understanding, which is why we're having the conversation now, it's why we're having the, the budget discussion in February and again in March. We really want to make sure that we are clearly communicating the, the budget constraints, the financial constraints we have, our budget priorities, and the, the, the budget options that the, the board has in terms of how we can move forward to, to create a balanced budget in constrained times. So, that's just a, an overview of the work that we're doing on the backend. Matt is working incredibly hard right now to present the, us with numbers that will give us a more focused view of how to proceed. Goal number five, transforming child nutrition, enhancing our mission through food. We really want our cafeterias to be an extension of our classrooms. I was very excited to have a meeting with a group we're calling our Kitchen Cabinet, was that yesterday?
Yeah.
That we, that we met? So these are parents, community members, administrators, and the, and our food service folks coming together. The one thing I would highlight that, that you can look forward to coming out of that meeting is a survey that will be going out relatively soon to all families, to, to kind of measure participation, their, the student sense of, or the parent sense of the quality of our food, the cultural diversity of the menus that we're, that we're providing, and also sustainable practices. So we're looking to get feedback on that, that will help us continue to improve our, our delivery of food service. And then the last, the goal to touch on today, creation of a new communication structure. So we, we made some changes last year, we, we eliminated a position of Director of Communications, but we made an effort to say, how can we do more with less? A big part of that, a shout, is Elizabeth here tonight? There she is, in the back, okay. Big shout out to Elizabeth. So, she does a yeoman's job of pushing information out to, to our staff, to our community, to the board, and so we're greatly appreciative of all, all of her efforts. That's a, a, a major focus of her work, even though she also spent some time working in the technology office as well. And then on the agenda tonight, and I just wanted to highlight it, we have, we're approving three interns. These are college journalism students who are gonna be joining us. I think there's two of them are starting tomorrow, and the other is coming onboard on Thursday. They're gonna be with us several days a week, and their, their, their goal is to highlight the, the teaching and learning that's happening in our classrooms. So they're gonna be going, every school is gonna have interns that will come, and every department will have an opportunity to, to talk about the stories that, that they should, they should highlight either through text or through video. So we have, one of the interns has a strong background in video production, so we're looking at some short video clips of our, of our teachers talking, our students sharing, and I think it's, it's well worth the investment, they're getting great experience, and we're getting the benefit of five to 10 hours a week of work on communications to celebrate the good work that's happening in our schools. The last thing I would mention, we have a lot of activities planned for next month, which is African-American Heritage Month. We have, I'm looking for, we're partnering with the public library. I think I sent this information to the board, I would encourage people to go on our website, I think it's on the main page of the website, you can click and see some of the things that are happening, but there's African-American Read-In, that's this Saturday, from 11 to 3:00. There are a number of lectures that are gonna be happening during the course of the month. There's going to be a community-wide book discussion of Why We Can't Wait, book by Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. We will be also having our, our semi-annual gospel concert, so we're having Bishop Chantel Wright, choral conductor, educator, and pastor, she'll be working with our students the week of February 17th, going to all of our schools, and running workshops there, and then there will be a, a performance on Friday, February 21st at 7:30 at the Princeton High School Performing Arts Center, where our choirs, church choirs in the area, dancers all come together for a really amazing celebration. So I encourage people to attend that.
Great.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right.
All right. Well, here we are, we've got one quick item, and then we're gonna go to public comment. Okay, so the first item, we're on the school calendar, can I have a motion for approval of the school calendar? Brian? Second? Betsy, is there any discussion?
Just a comment, I believe there's one change in that calendar from, and Betsy, you can help me with this, or Annie, from last month, when we've had it on for a first read. So, and this year, we have June 2nd off, because it's primary election day, and when we created the calendar for the first read, we had June 1st off next year for primary election day. However, we learned that it actually is going to be June 8th for primary election day. So that day is now Professional Development Day, and schools, teachers will be here, but students will not. Is that correct?
Correct, yes.
And that's the only change that I'm aware of.
So, all those in favor of the calendar?
Well, I wanted to say something, actually.
You wanna say something?
Yep. So I'm not gonna be voting for this calendar, because the start date is very late September 9th. I understand that date is due to referendum, the need to do referendum projects, however, the Stanford Success Study that we did do back in 2016, you know, showed us that our kids were stressed and weren't enjoying school, and this and that, and one of the findings, or one of the things that we contemplated was starting school before Labor Day, and that's something that we had discussed, in addition to pushing the start time to 8:30 and the rotating block schedule and all of that. So I think we all agree that student stress and well-being and engagement is, are the most important thing. However, I understand that there is a need to upgrade our facilities, and I would just hope, given that it looks like summer, work over the summer is gonna be something that's gonna be happening, at least for the next few years, I hope that when future calendars are constructed, that some kind of collaboration exists, so that we're not starting school this late, which goes against some of the research that shows kids learn better in September than they do in June.
Thank you. I agree with everything you said, it's a matter of competing priorities, I think.
So, any other comments?
And I do hope the board continues to look at that.
Okay. And no further comments, then can I have a, a show of hands, all those in favor?
Motion passes.
That brings us to our first public comment period. We encourage people to come to the podium, the public is welcome to speak. This is not a discussion between the board and the public, do you want to make a comment?
I do, I do. So I've been tasked with the unenviable job of being the timekeeper. And, and I don't, I'm not gonna have fun with doing that job, but I thought it was important to say, first of all, we welcome and invite and value comments from the public. So, please don't think for a moment that it's, that it's, that we don't want to hear what you have to say, but our job is to do the business of, for the district, and this is the, the forum where we have to get all of that done. We want to hear from everyone, but we will restrict your time to three minutes. And so I'm gonna ask you in advance to organize your thoughts before you step to the podium, be as succinct as you possibly can. If you think you can't complete your statement within that three-minute period, no problem, we invite emails and letters and any other kind of communication that you would like, but I hope that you will respect that three minutes, I'm not hardcore, I won't cut you off exactly at three minutes, but I will let you know that your time is up, and ask you to wrap up your thoughts and move on. So, I'm going to be firm about it. Just letting you know. All right, please step to the podium.
And when you speak, please state your name and your address, thank you.
I should have an opponent, okay, I do.
Thank you for being firm, so that we hear as many people as possible.
Yes.
So, good evening, my name is Yali Fu, I live in Harris Street. Dear PPS leadership team and distinguished Princeton Board of Education, I have already communicated with you through emails in past days, but here I would like to share my sum of points, and so that it get into records. Actually, our superintendent just briefly touched upon the advancing equity through students' achievements. Here I want to share my concern about banning rising ninth graders to take course advancement for mathematics, and I'm here to pleading you to address this matter immediately. And as you know, in the past many years, JW middle schoolers are allowed to take a math course over the summer, and upon passing that course, they are allowed to count that course for credit. Many of students have taken advantage of it through my communication with the parents and the friends nearby. Over the years, we have planned our son's summer activities, assuming that he will be able to take a summer math course this year, based on the email confirmation from the previous math supervisor. Imagine my shock when I learned that PPS is removing this policy without any prior discussion. How come a policy that's important, that directly affect our kids' learning and arguably college admission, not discussed in public first? So, I'm sure that you're aware that Princeton charter schools allow students to double up on geometry and algebra two in eighth grade, and those students will automatically advance into pre-calculus upon entering into the PHS. By banning this policy, will literally place our JW students at a competitive disadvantage. I'm really appreciative for the email responses for, from the principal, Jessica Baxter, Dr. Christina Donaville, and Betsy from BOE, over the past days for listening to our concern and starting to looking into this issue. I believe the board and the PPS shares a common goal with our parents at the Princeton community. I ask you that please continue the previous policy and allow our rising ninth graders to take summer enrichment courses, so that their academic needs be truly. I'm really appreciative for the email responses from the principal, Jessica Baxter, Dr. Christina Donival, and Betsy from BOE, over the past days for listening to our concern and starting to looking into this issue. I believe the Board and the PPS shares a common goal with our parents at the Princeton Community. I ask you that please continue the previous policy and allow our rising ninth graders to take summer enrichment courses so that their academic needs be truly met and that the potential can be fully realized. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Also, everyone, first, behalf of the new Board members and returning Board members, congratulations. It certainly, we appreciate John McKem, one of the co-presidents of PREA, the Teachers' Union, and certainly, we appreciate your public service and all the good work that you do on behalf of the district, the teachers, staff, students. Very much appreciated, and certainly, congratulations to the leadership of this new Board and the reorganization. So, thank you for that. Just wanted to speak quickly on the Rutgers Labor Management Collaborative. I think it's a really important initiative. It's something in myself and Renee's time as leadership of the union, we really tried to work together up and down the line, within the buildings with administration, and then even on the district level. And I think that's an important prerogative moving forward with all the challenges that we face as a district. We had the opportunity to attend some training sessions, and I think it really will help formalize some of these practices that we've tried to endeavor in our first couple of years here in service, and I think it's important moving forward in the challenges that we face. So, welcome, everyone new. We look forward to this new venture, and on our end, we're going to be working hard to try to build some of these structures. We like got a lot of group training so far, and we hope to build upon this within our buildings and within the district. So, thank you.
Thank you, John.
Good evening. Welcome returning members, and congratulations to new members. My name's Renee Sporn. I'm a co-president of PREA. Work with John here. I can't speak off the cuff. I have to have notes. Speaking about the Rutgers Collaborative, we do have to work together to face our challenges together. We can accomplish more together than apart. I know that we have a lot of brain power in this room and in this district. We have excellent, sharp Board members, intelligent administrators, and great teachers. As the district grows, there are ways that we can work together on the space issues facing the district, and we appreciate, really do, being brought into that conversation. I know that the Board has cited that the rising costs have been an issue. There are ways that we can work together on this issue. I see on the Board agenda tonight that there is a consulting service regarding a scheduling planner. I really think that there's enough collective brain power in our district to figure out and work through our schedules. Professional development, we hire a lot of outside presenters to train staff. We have such tremendously talented staff and administrators who are more than qualified to present on topics related to educations, and we do work on issues together, but we can certainly do more with our internal resources. Lastly, we are about to embark on negotiations, and believe it or not, we can't wait to sit down at the table. I know that sounds a little crazy, but just to let you know, we're only bringing educators to the table. We are willing to work together through any issue regarding the contract. Also, I know that you are paying an attorney to handle the negotiations between all the upper-level administrators that have experienced negotiating contracts and all the talented, smart members of the Board. We really should just sit down together and negotiate. I feel like we're missing an opportunity to work together and accomplish great things together while being cost-conscious as we do it. Thank you.
Is there anyone else? Yeah? Next.
Hi, good evening. My name is Tianhang Huang. I live at 48 Levitt Lane. I'm adding the comments which, for the rising ninth grade new policy. First of all, the inconsistent information was provided to parents and the students for this matter. Students were somewhat informed that there are some policy changes, but are vague about the contents, and the most of them do not even communicate with us, the parents, as usual. And while our parents are not informed at all for the policy changes, even on the night of the parent meeting, so, and also in the distributed program of studies on page 18, it still clearly says that the mathematics department opens opportunities for students to advance a level, and the process mentioned in the program seems consistent with the practice in the previous years, because my older son was in the district also. All these shows the lack of the communication, even somewhat miscommunication. So, and also, it shows lack of transparent and the community involvement. We do think this is an issue that the School Board should address. Okay. Second, if there's a new policy, the policy should take all children's needs into the consideration, not just the school's needs, all the graduation requirements. Princeton is always a great school, provides all kinds of opportunities to all kinds of kids. My older son and many of his friends are all grateful to the school district's policies. Without those opportunities and the flexibilities, many cannot pursue their dreams far beyond. And we don't have such student, we will not have such student like Ben Chi, who won the Olympic, you know, gold medal, international gold medal in the competition or Olympic competitions. This is Princeton's proud. I think we should make our Princeton even greater to nurture those talented students. Third, I'm one of the parents who was informed last year that our kid could advance a level when they are entering the ninth grade. So, why opt out was allowed last year and cannot be done this year? If this is the case, how are you going to address the issue that we were specifically told that our children would be allowed to advance on the math track? Was there a mistake? If it's a mistake, our children should not be short-changed due to the errors made by adults. Fourth, this is actually by my son because he talked to me. His point is actually, I think is very sharp. He said, "District said, that in order to address students' wellness and decrease their load, they do not allow kids to skip from eighths to nines, but they would allow the kids to skip from nines onward. But the skipping higher-level course is even more difficult and more stressful for the kids if you do not allow them to skip from eighth grade to ninth grade, but you allow them to skip a ninth onward. It will be more stressful because the course to be skipped is more difficult."
Thank you.
Yeah. So, that's my son's point. I think it's very sharp points. Finally, we would, yeah, okay, sorry.
Your three minutes are up, and so, we're happy to see your comments in writing if you'd like to wrap up that way, but we really do have a lot of business to handle this.
Okay. All right. I just want to board, consider to postpone the decision, at least to allow their people, give people more information about contents of the change and let the public to, you know, raise their concerns.
I'm very interested in learning more, so I'm looking forward to hearing from you. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who has comments?
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
I don't have a printout, so with me. Okay, anyway, I'm from, my name is Hong. I live at Neal Court, and I moved to Princeton from Delaware last summer, and then, my son is in the PHS, my daughter is in the JW, and we, I would like to support the summer program so the kids can learn more in the summertime. And also, I think that's a good time for the kids with the same passion and same interest to get together, and then, they can move on, and they're, they're learning together. Since my son was in the gifted program in Delaware, and we were, we also lived in Cincinnati for a year, so they are allowed to, they're allowed, the kids to get together and take different courses. So, I think that it's a great practice, have been done here, and we would like them to be continued. And for the summer program, it's also a great program for the students to spend their time more productivity, and also, for the kids who are learning something in the summer, they do not lose too much over the summer when they move on to the next semester. And also, one other thing that's for the kids who, who are learning together with same level in the school year, they will be more focused and less problem for the, either be overwhelmed or getting bored, since bored student or overwhelmed student will lead to the discipline problem. And also, the teacher will be, have an easier time to teach the students at the same level. So, if you can, just think that we are the special education. If the students, with this, with, with this kind of needs, get together and being addressed, so they will be happier, and just like Mrs. Shuf, since he's, she's our, my son's biology teacher, if the students can do what, do the things they like and get, get support from each other with the same level, their life will be easier, and they can have more sleep time and more happier life in the high school. So, that's my point.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
Is there any other comments? If there's no additional comments, I think we will move on with our agenda. Nine o'clock. We are now on our Board Committee reports. The first report would be from Equity, Michelle Duckponder.
Equity, okay. Well, the Equity Committee will have its first meeting of the year on February 10th. We will continue to meet the second Monday of the month, and February 10th is our first meeting, and our preliminary agenda will be addressing an Equity Impact State Assessment, so that for policies and rules and actions that we take in the school district, that we will have a barometer to test to see how it will impact all the students across the district. And so, we'll be talking about that at our first meeting, and then, we'll be, have invited representatives from the Asian and Asian-American community to come and talk about their experiences in the district. And our March meeting is scheduled to be a joint meeting with the Student Achievement Committee. We had a meeting back in December, a joint meeting, very big meeting, and I'm talking about the definition of achievement. And so, we are in the, in the process of compiling that information, and we'll meet again to talk about our findings and what our next step should be. So, that's it.
Thank you. Any questions? If no questions, then we're on Facilities. That's Susan Kanter and Brian McDonald.
I'm going to be doing the report for this month. So, we met on January 21st from 11:00 to 1:00, and in that meeting, we discussed, we gave updates on the referendum projects that we have ongoing. So, we learned that the Riverside Project is now closed out, and the PHS Gym Project is almost completed in the sense that we just need, we're doing some training this week, and then, some final paperwork, and then, that, that project will be closed as well. We discussed the road access that's needed at JP for PS and G, and that is an ongoing discussion as we are taking bids on that project. We then discussed our security vestibules, specifically CP, where some changes are being made to the entranceway. That project is still in the process of being finalized, and hopefully, that will be done shortly. The other security vestibule supplies have been ordered, and that's projects that will be completed in five schools this summer. CP and Littlebrook are continuing with their HVAC project, so we just got an update on that. And then, we discussed JW, which will be having our first construction project, and that will be getting started either in late February or early March, and continuing throughout the summer, and hopefully, be ready for September. We, we looked at our goals. So, besides our referendum planning and implementation of this current referendum, Dave Harding continues to update us on his maintenance processes and preventative maintenance practices that he's starting to put into effect, and he's also working on systems to help buildings report their problems and get them fixed as quickly as possible. So, he's been working in each building to start those processes going. We just, we will always try to keep up to date on sustainability. We're lucky to have Debbie on our committee because she's representative to that in our, from the Board in our district. And our final area of concentration is communication, to better communicate with each of our schools, what will be happening in their building, to communicate with teachers and administrators, what will be happening in their building. We're going to be working on four buildings this summer with six contractors, so it's a lot of moving parts, so we want everyone to understand what will be happening before they get there, while the work is being done, and where we will be, starting in September. So, that was the main points of our meetings.
Thank you, Susan.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
I just wanted, and I don't know who has the answer, but both Littlebrook and CP, I understand, expressed some concerns about the vestibule, and I know Brian and I, Brian and I were at Littlebrook, and there was talk about bringing someone in to look at the layout of the vestibule, and I know CP, some parents had concerns or the referendum team.
CP, we are looking at the layout with, with Dineen and the architects, and that's been, that's a, yeah, that's a big project that's going on. You can give us a better update on Littlebrook?
I believe Steve had a meeting today with the principal of Littlebrook, not exclusively on that topic, and that our Facilities Director, Dave Harding, plans to meet with him soon and has sent him the plans so that they can have a good discussion.
So, are the plans final now, or can changes still be made?
It's a great question. They, they were final some time ago, but because of the energy and interest in looking again at CP, you know, Steve felt it was very important that we, that the professionals take the time to do that, and so, it's likely that the, the plans that were, existed when the contract was awarded are likely to be modified, which will result in a combination of a credit for the work that was going to be done and a change order for the new work. And there are still some, a need to get the contractor to provide exact amounts to determine whether the pricing will inform the options that are possible to consider. But hopefully, that will all get resolved in a week to 10 days, and if, if after the meeting with Dave Harding, the principal at Littlebrook, Louie, has continuing concerns, we'll, we'll discuss them.
So, does every school have a referendum committee? So, I know CP has a committee that meets. Does, does every school, because Brian, when you and I were there, the principal raised concerns that maybe only someone so familiar with the building would understand, and I think it's a very important viewpoint that needs to be considered.
They all, they all do, have referendum review teams.
They do?
Yes.
So, they've already reviewed the vestibule plans at Littlebrook, and now, they're having, they want to revise them, or, I'm just trying to understand where there, if there's a disconnect, and just, we want to make sure that, you know, everyone's happy.
My understanding is that they did review the overall scope, that there were several meetings to take a look at what the design was going to be. I'm not sure that they saw the actual, like, layout, which is what I think Dave is going to be, Dave Harding is going to be sharing with Louie this week.
Okay. And so, the plan for the referendum is, the projects that affect a school, they're being looked at before, like, a final order is being submitted. Is that correct? Like, before, you can't make a change, whatever that verbiage is.
Who's looking at them?
The, the team, the school team.
They should be giving input into, there's, the projects are complex, so there's some projects, the electrical work, they're probably not going to have a whole lot of input into the design of what's going on behind the wall. So, it's really, it's, if some of it is design, some of it might be questions around swing space, like, if, you know, we're going to be at the high school, they were looking, taking, having a lot of conversations about where does guidance go when we need to, you know? So, it might not always be about design. It could be about the, the implementation process and, and, you know, where staff may be located, relocated while construction is taking place. There are a lot of issues that the team- There are a lot of issues that the team is looking at.
Okay. Thanks.
I'm just going to add one more thing in the meeting that we discussed, which is the PHS bid. Right now, that's being looked at by the Department of Community Affairs, which is different than what our other projects, because of the large scope of the project. The other projects could be approved by Princeton planners in town. They're Level Two certified, but because of the scope of this project, it had to go to the New Jersey Department of Community Affairs. We're waiting for them to give their review, because we would like to have that bid placed by the end of February, but it's going to be dependent upon them getting back in a timely manner so that the bids can be awarded in March, so that the summer, we could start our smaller, smaller construction being done there.
Are there any other questions?
Yes, I do. You had mentioned earlier, this is facilities related, but you had brought it up, that the, as part of the final affordable housing settlement, we have, I think the number is 124 fewer school-aged children. And when the demographer did his report, George Sundell, Sundance, that number was not known. And then he came out with a couple of numbers, were then baked into M and M. So I think it would be the district planning firm who presented on Saturday. I think it'd be helpful if he could update, and I'm sure that's a very easy thing to do and inexpensive to do, put in his model, the actual school-aged children that we're now expecting from the affordable housing settlement versus what he was projecting before he did the report, in order to have an accurate demographer's report. I think that, that, you know, the delta of 124 is very significant.
Good. Just, yeah, just to, thank you for, for bringing that up. It is, it is important that there is, that was that change, the affordable housing settlement happened on December 18th. So it was not included in the Sundance report. However, it was factored into Malone and McBroom, and they are professional demographers who have been in touch with, with George Sundell from Sundance. So they have been talking, they took his work, and they actually, in their, their slides, they showed his projections, and then they, they overlaid their own projections, but their projections from Malone and McBroom do include the most recent data we have on the number of school-aged children as a result of the, the most recent affordable housing settlement. So I'm not sure it would make, it would be cost-effective to ask George to go back and redo his numbers if he's sort of handed off all of his work to Malone and McBroom, who are professional demographers and have done their due diligence to make sure that that's incorporated.
Well, that actually brings up another question, because they, they had said, and I saw that slide, but they had said they had supported the work of George Sundell, and their work was consistent with it, which I don't understand now, because there's difference of 124 kids.
They're consistent with a lot of the assumptions, so the formulas that they use, the process that the demographers use to, to make their conclusions, where they're looking at cohort survival ratios, live births, the housing, like, all of those factors. They revetted and worked, and, and found that George followed an appropriate process, and then they added on the additional information that, that George did not have, based on the, the school-aged children from the affordable housing settlement.
Okay. Thank you.
You want to add to that?
Uh, no, I think you explained it well. I just wanted to make one note, so that there's no confusion. The planning process, the board decided last summer that the board would own the planning process, so that has not been and is not expected to be a topic that is covered in Facilities Committee meetings, nor would we plan to report on it. So it is related, but it's a different beast.
And if there are things we need to talk about, then we can talk about putting them on the main agenda to make sure we have room to discuss.
Yeah.
So, thanks, thanks, Dan.
Just one thing. I, I thought we were always going to have on the agenda, the referendum spreadsheet. It's not there, correct?
No, it is not there.
Okay.
Very, very little has changed since December 17th.
Right, but we, for the public and all, I think it was more for that. And new board members. I think it was more for that, just the transparency.
So maybe we get an update on that.
Yep, thank you, Debbie.
Just to, to attach it in the future.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
Are we ready now for Finance? Can we move on? Finance?
Sure.
It'll be Brian? Thanks.
The Finance Committee met for the first time this year on Tuesday, January 21st. We had the opportunity to welcome Betsy to the Finance Committee and to welcome back Debbie after a brief vacation from Finance, and I got to thank Dan and Beth for their continuing service. We discussed three possible, significant actions to recommend to the board. The first is regarding a change in our health benefits, particularly, in, in particular, how our pharmacy benefits are managed. Matt has worked very hard with our new insurance broker, the Doyle Alliance Group, and we had a very healthy discussion, and based on that discussion, the committee was unanimous in recommending to the board that we change our, our pharmacy manager from Medco or Express Scripps, which is the same thing, to CVS, which also goes by Caremark. And that is on the agenda tonight. Second thing, we discussed where we are also in agreement, unanimous agreement in our recommendation, is to initiate an operating lease for GPS-enabled radios. We have our own school buses, 33 of them, I think, and most of the radios are old and no longer functioning at the level that we would like, and they do not have GPS capability. So in order to conform with current best practices, we would be recommending the lease of new units that have both the modern radio technology and the GPS tracking, which adds a layer of security, as we can know at any time exactly where a bus is. A question was asked whether our external transportation providers had that equipment, and the answer was yes, they do. All of them have the modern radios and the GPS tracking equipment. So that's a recommendation we'll also seek action on tonight. A third was a discussion of our Chromebooks. There has, it came as a bit of a surprise, but 1,300 of our Chromebooks have expiring licenses. This is not something we didn't, not a function of our tracking, it's a function of a decision made by Google, and it affects everyone in the state of New Jersey, and a lot of people are really trying to think through what to do. And so our information technology team has done some research and gave us a briefing on, an initial briefing on the need to consider purchasing replacement Chromebooks soon. The committee had a number of good questions and expressed both interest and, and concerns and shared ideas and different perspectives, and asked them to return with more information and ideally with the multi-year technology plan that we have been hoping to receive for some time. So no action is recommended there right now. And finally, the rest of the meeting was a beginning of budget discussions, and specifically a first look at the chart of accounts. We did not get as far as we had hoped, so we will be meeting again this Monday, the third, to spend more time on the chart of accounts and make sure that the committee is fully briefed in advance of Matt finalizing his presentations for the, the first round at the Budget Workshop on February 11th. And that's all I have.
Questions? If there's no questions, we're on to Personnel. Debbie?
The Personnel Committee met on Thursday, January 23rd. Jessica Baxter, the high school principal, attended our meeting and spoke about the PE substitute pilot program at PHS for the month of December. The pilot strictly focused on PE, not driver's ed or health class. There were 14 school days in December, and PHS had 42 PE classes that required coverage during the month due to staff being out. Students were able to attend other PE classes, do homework, or enjoy a free period. The pilot was successful, and Ms. Baxter is going to continue running it through January. Ms. Baxter mentioned that there can be safety issues with equipment sometimes when you have a PE substitute. The committee reviewed another sample evaluation form in preparation for our non-tenure review in April. This was also shared and commented on by the administrators. The committee discussed other staffing issues and days off. Tonight, the board will be asked to approve a revised guideline for the sick leave bank process. The guidelines were created by one member from each union, a board member, and administration. The board reviewed updates to current job descriptions, requests for personnel, leave replacements, open positions, and attendance monitoring procedures that were related to CUSAC. I would personally like to thank Lynn Harkness for her 31.5 years at JW, and I appreciate that she was part of the JW administration and helped guide my two sons while they were at JP, at JW. You will be missed. Thanks.
Thank you, Debbie. Are there any questions? If none, then we're on to Policy. Jess?
So, um, Policy, the reconstituted Policy Committee, which includes...
Microphone.
Oh, sorry. The reconstituted Policy Committee will include myself, Dan Dart, Susan, Beth, and we will continue the process of conversion to the NGSBA policy manual. We are 80% complete, based on the work of the last Policy Committee with 20% to go. And we will meet for the first time this, this year, this Thursday, January 30th, 8:00 AM at Valley Road. Public is welcome and invited to attend, and this evening, we have four policies on for second reading, carried over from the last board.
Thank you. Questions? Next is Student Achievement.
Thank you. Student Achievement Committee met on Friday, January 17th, at 11:30 here in this room. The 2020 Student Achievement Committee consists of Debbie Bronfeld, Dan Dart, Daphne Kendall, Susan Kanter, and myself. Beth Baron and Jess Deutsch are alternates to the committee. We do try to have five board members present for Student Achievement when we can. Minutes of December 13th were approved. The student field trips and overnight trips that are on tonight's agenda were discussed and put on this agenda for full board approval with the Student Achievement Committee's recommendation. As Steve discussed, we noted one revision to the 2021 school calendar, which we've just now approved. We will begin reviewing next year's school calendar in the next month or so, with my hope it'll be fully board-approved in the next few months. So we'll see. With the September 9th start in the 2021 school year, we hope that our nonprofit partners consider this a great opportunity to offer late summer camps with potentially high school counselors to help meet the needs of our families, and we ask our families to help their favorite nonprofit partners brainstorm possibilities. We also hope there'll be scholarships for our students. So I'm really eager to start this conversation. I ask any of you that are here and any of you watching to please start thinking creatively on how we can provide some opportunities for our kids at the very end of the summer. Lori Anito and Gabe Shakney attended Student Achievement to discuss the current process that we have in our district of providing laptops and mobile access points to economically disadvantaged students in grades four through 12 through the district's mobile access program. They explained the system to us that they've developed for tracking these devices in the hotspots and how they work with the district's family liaisons to ensure that all students who need this equipment receive it. To equitably serve all students, Lori and Gabe recently applied for a grant to expand the program to grades K to three. The committee certainly thanked Lori and Gabe for their efforts related to this initiative. Then we had a number of staff members come to talk about vaping and vaping education in our middle and high school. Amy Worgo, Pat Noon, Michelle Symborsky, and Matt Wilkinson attended our meeting to share with Student Achievement how vaping is currently taught at the middle and high school levels. Michelle Symborsky is the student assistance counselor at the high school. She explained the process for students coming to her confidentially for help quitting if they are vaping. She also described other PHS initiatives, such as a poster-making campaign, email blast to parents, I just noticed one this week, quit vaping signs in the bathroom, and there may be a peer-to-peer program starting. I believe that's starting this spring as well. Amy Worgo, who's the health teacher at JW, explained how vaping is discussed in the curriculum. We spent some time talking about whether or not we thought, whether or not they thought vaping education should start in fifth grade. Amy shared with us that they start this with a pretest of sixth graders' knowledge about vaping, and actually, they have very little knowledge when they, when they get to JW. So it may not be necessary to discuss this at elementary at this time. Pat Noon shared at the high school how PE and health teachers are trying to engage students and found that students are really comfortable sharing ideas online through a discussion board, so they've also taken students' lead related to popular social media platforms. And Matt Wilkinson noted for all of us that many students are great role models and care very much for the students in their school who are struggling. So we thanked all of them for their commitment to this topic. Annie Kosick presented a list of program reviews, past, present, and future. I wanted to highlight for you tonight that district is engaged in the following program reviews. These will culminate in presentations to Student Achievement and the full BOE and May or June of this year. English Language Arts, Visual and Performing Arts, ESL, bilingual and dual-language immersion, a continuation of school counseling, as well as the Special Education Program Review, which is on our agenda tonight for the approval of funds to hire an outside consultant to help us with that. A member of the public asked for clarification regarding our, our computer science program review, and that will be shared at a future Student Achievement meeting. After a public comment period, we adjourned into closed session. The next two Student Achievement meetings will be this Friday, the 31st, and Friday, February 21st. Our meetings begin at 11:30, and the first hour is open to the public, and we welcome you to attend.
Thank you, Betsy. Any questions?
Just a comment. The, I was really excited that our, you know, health and PE are talking about vaping. You know, I'm not too happy with our government that they haven't put their foot down, but I'm glad that we're doing something, because it just came on, and it's, it's really great that we have implemented this, because it's something we really need. So it was really great to hear them, and it sounds really positive, and it just sounds like the kids are engaged, and I'm really happy about that.
Great. Thank you. Anything else? If there's no further discussion, I think we're on to Item K, Policies. So again, when we do consent items, we kind of go through them. If there's no, no discussion, we just move on, and we'll vote on them at the end. So Item K, one, second reading, we have four policies. Family leave and medical leave, compensation-related benefits, vacation holidays, standard of proficiency. Are any, any discussion, any questions? The next item, we're in our Personnel Agenda. The first item is a consent item, it's retirement. It's Lynn Harkness. Steve, did you want to say something?
I just, there was like a pall of sadness that fell over JW on February 13th.
Did your mic go?
Oh. On February 13th, when the staff heard the announcement that Assistant Principal Lynn Harkness was going to be retiring, and I just, Debbie, you said it well in terms of, you know, the 31 and a half years, that's a lot of students whose lives she impacted. And she was dedicated to, to kids and present in that middle school day in and day out, and were incredibly grateful for her service and excited for her as, as she begins a very well-deserved retirement.
Thank you. Okay. Item two, resignations, it's a consent item. Item three, appointments. Item four, sixth-period compensation. Item five, salary step movements. Item six, certification stipends. Item seven, PAA vacation buyback. And item eight, leaves of absence is an action item. Can I have a motion? Brian, second. Dan? Any discussion? If none, do we do a roll on that one? Because it's a...
Sure.
Yeah.
Beth Baron?
Yes.
Debbie Bronfeld?
Yes.
Dan Dart?
Yes.
Jess Deutsch?
Yes.
Betsy Baglio?
Abstain.
Brian McDonald?
Yes.
Michelle Tuck Ponder?
Yes.
Daphne Kendall?
Yes.
Susan Kanter?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Item nine, Student Services Hourly Work is a consent item. Item 10, Curriculum and Instruction Hourly Appointments. Item 11, Athletics Hourly Work. Item 12, Student Placements Interns. Item 13, Substitutes. Item 14, Other Personnel Items. Item 15, Sick Leave Bank, Revised Guidelines. Item 16, Resolution to Create Unbudgeted Positions. And that brings us to Curriculum Instruction. Item one, Education Consulting Services, Crescendo Education Group. Item two, Educational Consulting Services, Michael Reddick.
Could I ask a question about that item? Annie, I'm not sure if you could take a moment, the scheduler that's on the agenda, to just talk about why that might be a valuable source, source of knowledge for, for JW and CP at this time.
So Michael Reddick is, has been...
Microphone.
I must have clicked twice. Michael Reddick is a school scheduling specialist. He worked with us about nine or 10 years ago, when we were kind of recreating our elementary school schedules, and he did some remarkable work for us then in terms of trying to fit everything into the elementary school day. And in fact, that was the point at which we were able to fit that focus period in. That's how long we've had that. That's how long we've had that elementary focus period since he's been here. So, right now, we're looking at some, a very complex schedule at Community Park School because in addition to all of the expectations we have within the district, we also have some mandates from the state about number of minutes for different things. And we also have a DLI program that requires a certain number of minutes for both English and Spanish learning. So, this is just an opportunity for us to have someone come in and look at that schedule and sort of help us figure out exactly the most effective use of that time. There is a scheduling committee at CP. They've been working on it for a while, and this will just be to the benefit of that school. While we're doing that, we're also looking at a new schedule for JW. And again, very complex schedule there. So, we are going to ask Michael Reddick to work with the scheduling team there to sort of help, just help us tweak some of the things that we're just either missing or not seeing as we're trying to develop that schedule.
Thank you. Can I ask a question? So, is this consultant solely for the DLI program? Or is the work at JW across all grades?
Oh, yeah, JW is across all grades. It's the full school schedule.
Okay, thanks.
Would that involve the start time and the finish time? Or is it really within the date as is presently laid out?
Yeah, this would not include that.
Okay, thank you.
Item three, educational consulting services, Sage Wellness. Item four, student day field trips. Item five, student overnight trips. That brings us to student services, special ed. Item one, educational placement of students, 2019-20. Item two, educational placement of special ed students, 2019-20. Item three, settlement agreement. Item four, educational placement of special ed students. Item five, consulting services, Public Service Consulting Group.
Can I just say one note about that? This is the consulting group we're hiring to work on our special education program review. I just want to thank the members of the Special Education PTO for being part of that review committee with us. As Daphna said, it's very exciting that this is finally launching. It's really important work, and we thank our parents for engaging with us.
Thank you, Betsy. Item O1, financial reports. Item O2, termination of current pharmacy benefit manager and appointment of CVS Caremark. Item three, acceptance of donation Riverside PTO. I think we want to thank the PTO for that amount. I'm not sure, Steve, do we have detail on what that is for? Is that for playground equipment?
It says playground.
Yep. Okay. Item four, exceptions of donation Littlebrook PTO. Again, that's a generous donation on behalf of, by the PTO of...
Yep, can I just say something there? So, that was, there was a need identified in the special education area.
Yeah.
And one donor donated the money that was needed to purchase materials that were needed.
Is that Riverside or Littlebrook?
No, that's Littlebrook.
Littlebrook. Wonderful. Thank you for that.
So, thank you for your generous offering.
Yes, thank you.
Very much.
Item five, fire and evacuation drills. Item six, travel and related expenses. And that brings us to the consent vote. Can I have a motion?
Can we just separate the CVS Caremark? I thought that was going to be a separate finance vote. Is that part of the consent?
That is...
Yes, it is on the consent agenda. Nobody asked me to separate it. We can take a separate manual vote. I'll be happy to do that. So, let's take the consent vote now, then I'll note that that will be separated out.
We'll do that next as a action. So, can I have a motion on the consent item? Brian, second. Betsy? Any discussion? If none, you want to do a roll call, please?
Beth Baron?
Yes.
Debbie Bronfeld?
Yes.
Dan Dart?
Yes.
Jess Deutsch?
Yes.
Betsy Bagwell?
Yes.
Brian McDonald?
Yes.
Michelle Tuck-Ponder?
Yes.
Daphne Kendall? Susan Cantor?
Yes.
Consent agenda passes.
And then I guess we need to do a separate vote for the item. We're going to separate this out now.
And two, O2.
O2, termination of current pharmacy benefit manager. So, can I have a motion? Brian, second. Jess? Any discussion?
What was the other one that we just looked at? O2. No, this was, this is O2.
It's termination.
What was the one where we appointed them? I just want to look.
The O2 is where we're appointing. We're terminating and appointing.
No, are you talking about the one and two? No, what did we just vote?
We did the consent.
The whole consent agenda.
What is being separate? That's what's being separate.
Oh, yes.
The pharmacy.
So, if there's no discussion of O2, then I think we can take a vote, roll call?
Yes. Beth Baron?
Yes.
Debbie Bronfeld?
Yes.
Dan Dart?
Abstain.
Jess Deutsch?
Yes.
Betsy Bagwell?
Yes.
Brian McDonald?
Yes.
Michelle Tuck-Ponder?
Yes.
Daphne Kendall?
Yes.
Susan Cantor?
Yes.
I'm sorry, Susan Cantor. Okay. O2 passes.
Okay. That brings us to another public, our final public comment opportunity on any topic. If there's anyone from the public who would like to speak, please approach the podium. Same rules.
Same rules.
As she explained last time.
Rod Montgomery? Oh, sorry.
I'm sorry, Rod, go ahead.
Yes, go ahead, please.
Rod Montgomery from William Patterson Court, curmudgeon taxpayer, speaking as always in what the positive psychology people call the active-destructive mode from a fundamental position of hopeful pessimism. Four brief points. First of all, I apologize to Assistant Superintendent Kosick and to the Student Achievement Committee for the intemperate and incoherent character of my remarks at the last student achievement committee meeting. At my age, I should be setting an example of civility, not descending to the poo-flinging that seems to be the customary mode of political discourse in our politics these days. Second, I invite your attention again to this book, Learning in the Fast Lane, just published last year. The Past, Future, Past, Present, and Future of Advanced Placement. I invited the board's attention in an email a little while ago. This copy belongs to the Princeton Public Library, to which I will be returning it. And those of you who are not inclined to buy copies of your own may fight over this one. I provided two copies to Principal Jessica Baxter for use by her and her colleagues in the Advanced Placement Program Review. Third, thank you for the YouTube archive of the PHS program of Studies Night. I was especially pleased to see that taking a free period was depicted as a normal thing, not as an indication of slacking or of deprivation of educational opportunity. Finally, thanks for the archived slides from the future planning presentation of the 25th of January. It needs an email address for feedback. The questionnaire leaves something to be desired as a vehicle for critical comments. Thank you, as usual, for your attention, and thank you for your hard work for Princeton students.
Thank you, Mr. Montgomery.
You're always welcome, Mr. Montgomery, at student achievement and all of our committees.
Is there anyone else who would like to speak? If not, we're moving on to our closing discussion comments. And I think we reserved some time tonight just to talk maybe briefly about our committees and any ways we can make them work more effectively. We have a board goal, as we all know, that talks about increasing committee effectiveness, transparency, and communication. And some of the things we talked about were perhaps getting agendas to the full board before we have committee meetings so that gives the opportunity for people who are not on the committee to pass on questions or concerns to those who are on the committees. I don't know if that's something that's difficult to do, but when we circulate our agendas, perhaps they could just go to everyone.
Could I add a related note? It's very, very helpful when agendas go on the calendar, online. So, I just remind committee chairs, if you have an open session of your committee, I'm blanking right now on who the right person to send that to is. Giovanna always sends it for us. Perhaps Patty's the right person. But it's very helpful to the public when they click on the calendar date. If it says a committee and they click on that, they can actually see the PDF of the agenda. So, I just remind all of us to continue that when possible.
Yes?
I would like to ask my colleagues to consider having an occasional meeting in the evening. There's a very exclusive group of people who can meet during the day. And those are people who do not work outside of the home or have childcare concerns. And when we conduct our business during the day, and again, all due respect to our staff who have to stay out at night and staff these meetings. If the town volunteer commissions can meet in the evening, it would seem to me that if we're so interested in being transparent and we're so interested in encouraging participation, that we should make our meetings accessible to more people. And it is, I'm not suggesting that we do it all the time, but I am suggesting that we consider holding meetings in the evenings that will allow people who are interested and want to participate, but who are committed during the day, to attend a meeting every once in a while and participate.
Thank you. Is that something that our chairs would be willing to do? At least one or two of your meetings? Try to move them?
Can I just ask a related question? If, some of our committees have more staff members who attend than others. I'm thinking we could create a student achievement agenda that's really meaningful that might not have many staff. If we're asking staff to come in the evening, do we offer to pay them for their time in the evening? This is just a procedural question. I'm not sure of the answer.
I don't either. You generally salaried people. Yeah, if salaried people generally, at certain levels, don't receive extra pay other people if it's not part of a contractual obligation. Let me say this. Whether there's, whether they're, we have to pay them or not, the people in this town deserve to have access and exposure to those people as well.
Absolutely.
So, I think that on occasion, having a meeting in the evening and having those people available so that folks can hear what it is they have to say is worth the expenditure.
I'm, yes, let me be clear. I'm not suggesting we never offer to pay or that that's a reason we shouldn't do it ever. I think that's a reason some committees can't do it all the time. But I think, yes.
Understood, but we could do it some of the time.
Yep.
Can I just, if we are going to do that, and I think you make excellent points, I hope we can coordinate a bit so that we don't have a whole bunch of them in one week because the members of the public would probably find it difficult to come on multiple nights. So, to the extent that the committee chairs or anyone can provide some guidance about six committees, you know, two times, we should be all figured this out.
And perhaps even offer babysitting. I'm wondering if some high school students could get community service hours because there's another segment of our population where actually evenings provide a different challenge than daytime. But I think we do want to encourage as many people to come as possible.
Charlie and I are going to work on that.
Excellent.
I'll just add that also the policy committee has made an effort to have early morning meetings, which as someone who's working full-time and serving on the board, I really appreciate the opportunity to get committee work done prior to the start of the workday. So, it's just another option to put out there in the interest of having some flexible options.
So, Equity is already meeting in the evening. But maybe as the committees come up with potential evening dates, because it will be, for everyone's got different people that are working with them, maybe you, chairs can share with each other so that they kind of fall in place, that they're not all at one time or not, that they're spread out a little bit. So, we'll leave that to the chairs? Okay. Another thing I want to note that I think is an improvement this year is that we've moved our finance committee to now occur a week before the meeting. So, we have some time to reflect. We're not having it the same day or the day before, which brings it more in cycle with the other committees. And that suggests, again, the need to, how do we communicate out with the board after our committees so that when there is a gap, everyone knows what's gone on in the committee meetings? We have different ways of taking minutes in different committees. And I think last year, we talked about a one-page, you know, quick update for, at a minimum, that could go out to the full board, which is done by other boards and recommended by the NJSBA. So, you know, I opened that up for discussion. How can we, you know, improve how we're communicating with each other so everybody knows what's going on in the meetings? I know that there's often, we have very detailed minutes, which are wonderful, but we end up really not seeing them. And, you know, what do you think?
Yeah, well, that's, so student achievement, I can just speak to that. Typically, the minutes go out with the agenda. So, everyone receives the agenda, the agendas for opening, close session. From Giovanna, they probably will go out tomorrow with the minutes from the last meeting. Sometimes it's two weeks, which is not much. Sometimes it's six weeks, like the December to January, that's a long time. I think I'm open to suggestions. I could do a brief, you know, report right away. I also think I can also highlight the three things we discussed quickly. Maybe every, maybe every chair could do that very quickly, just to say, we discussed these three things. Minutes are forthcoming.
I think that would be helpful.
If you have... Right, right. That may just be...
Yeah, I think like if you highlight the one, two, or three things you think everyone would want to know.
Could we just post those highlights on board docs in the list of meetings? And we have agendas and minutes of our regular meetings already posting on board docs. So, can we just add the committees there?
We could. Public or executive, it depends.
So, we had this discussion at some other point. I think we're better off having notes from the committee meetings than official minutes, which have a, kind of a different, it's a non-trivial difference. And I guess I just have a question. I think that the information that comes out from student achievement and personnel is incredibly comprehensive and helpful. How does that get prepared?
We do it ourselves.
But do you write it? Do you write it?
Yeah, of course I do.
You do the minutes?
Very impressive.
I thought you had a staff person. It doesn't?
But sometimes, depending on the meeting is, yes. I do it for this. I always write it for this. Because...
For this board.
For yours.
Yeah.
I mean, the minutes or the notes, the, you know, the multi-page notes that go out.
I do those for student achievement. Whether that's a good decision, I'm not sure. But I do those.
Yeah.
She's doing it during the meetings.
Yeah. Right. I just think we need to, you know, talk about our practice and kind of think about what works best. I certainly think if we could be summarizing for each other in a way that's not necessarily, you know, confidential or just basic information about, here's what we covered this week. If you have questions, then we can ask each other questions and be more informed and be ready for the meetings.
Yeah, I would just say that, and this is just personal experience serving on a lot of boards, every single board I've been on, where there've been committee meetings, there's been a staff member who's, you know, been responsible for that board and responsible for sort of creating, you know, a first draft that then the chair would look at. I don't know what our interns are going to be up to. And as you continue to think about a communication structure...
That's not a bad idea.
I'm just saying, I think it's a, we work pretty hard. And to add that burden on top of everything else to these volunteer roles, it's asking a lot.
I think so, too.
Especially if you're not, I mean, I'm not capable of doing it in real time during the meeting. So, if this is important, if this is something we care about, I would just hope it would be a consideration as Steve continues to develop his communications plan, that this be a component of it.
Okay.
It doesn't have to be like detail. It could just be, you know, bullet points. That's where I think you're getting hung up.
And the process has shifted over time. Student achievement, five years ago, we had, Giovanna was sitting in on every meeting. Or Bonnie actually took the notes.
Yeah, Giovanna, since she used to come to the meetings.
Right. And personnel, Lucy just started.
Right.
Right, so it's, it...
But Lucy really is for Mike.
But always.
In a way, but I could write the notes, yeah.
But always, the administrator had taken notes, but the minutes came out. So, I think every, every committee has been different. And it's sort of, when the committees were created, policy was so new. There was no administrator, sort of, sort of no administrative support responsible initially. Certainly, there was an administrator present. But that's something, you know, if we think that is the highest and best use of our staff members' time, these committee meetings are a long time. It's a lot of hours. So, we just need to consider that.
I think just if our chairs and where we don't have minutes coming out, I think if our chairs can just give us some bullets, I think that's enough for now.
Yeah, I think you only need bullets. I don't think you need full minutes.
I don't want to make any more work for us at all.
Can you circulate that form?
I can. The form is, I said, the form is like... I can't, the form is, I said, the form is like a no-brainer. It's very, who's there, what'd you talk about, you know, what's going to be on the next agenda? I can give this to you again. Very simple. So maybe we use the skeleton form for the ones we don't have a other process for. I can, I can. We also have a goal of defining each committee's purpose and charge. And I would suggest that that's a policy committee, that if the chairs could just send to the policy committee one or two lines, I don't think we have to be so detailed. But we, it even says in our committee bylaw, or, yeah, our committee bylaw, that when you put people on committees, they're entitled to a description of what the committee does. And we don't necessarily have that. And I think we should put something together. So is that a good idea for committee chairs, maybe to send to Jess? Each committee, a two to three line?
Just suggest the first step might be to make it a topic at the next committee meeting so the full board can participate in that process.
The committees themselves, yeah. However. Yeah, I think that's important, to have some more transparency about what we're doing. And we also talked about annual committee goals. I mean, again, I just put that out there for us, if that's realistic or not. It's something we had talked about last summer when we did our goals. We, guidelines for community engagement during open meetings. I think that we have some kind of unwritten practices now that we're developing, right? We can think about whether to be more formal. And then the meeting summary. So I'm just kind of looking at what we agreed, you know, what we talked about last summer as that would be helpful to us. So we obviously evolve what we need, but this is the way we do our work. So I think we just need to have, you know, constant conversation about that to make sure everyone feels like they know what's going on, where the work's getting done, and how that's happening. So are there any?
Could you send that also, those questions that you just posed to the chairs? Just because that maybe, like for policy, I think it would be useful conversation to start the policy committee gathering with just discussion of those, our responses to those questions. And write it up, thank you.
Well, I sent it when I, in my update on the 24th, I actually put the board goal in there. I gave the list. So I'll do it again, I'll give it to us with the, with the form. And is there anything else about committees?
Yeah, oh, not committees, sorry, before I forget. We do have our next bagels with the board at JW on Friday, February 21st, eight to nine. We will all be there, please come. Bagels are really good this year, so.
They're good bagels.
Please join us.
Thank you, Debbie. Can, anything else on committees?
Yes, 21st, I think. Okay, great. Okay, great, fantastic. I guess, just one question, related to committees is, last year on a, I guess it was a trial basis, we tried to filter questions through committee chairs if it didn't neatly fit in a committee to go through you, or committee chairs with a copy to you so you could see the volume. Is that something, is that still going to be our practice to?
It's up to us, it's up to the board.
I guess that's why I'm asking the question.
Well, that's too many people on the email, right?
Sorry.
Is it going to the whole committee?
No, he's saying the committee chairs.
Yeah, I mean, the thought is, the committee chair gets batched, efficient use of the staff members' time.
If I have a personnel question, I go through you, you batch them, and then you give them to Mike, right?
And then, and then the judgment of the staff member and the committee chair would indicate whether the reply would go to the full board. If it were like a, one question where it doesn't, it might not be of interest to the full board, you would just get the answer. But if it's something that might be interesting to the full board, then you could, the staff member could share it with the full board.
And I think we really need to be doing that because otherwise we're, you know, some of us aren't on these. And then some people get very informed about certain things and other people don't even know the conversations going on. So I do think it's important, you know, for our administrators to remember that when they're answering questions, we all, we all want to know, you know, to the extent that there's answers. We may not have asked the questions, but.
Well, for me, with our budget season, I have an issue always going through you before, and then you piling them up, you know, to get to Matt. Because, you know, I went through all the, I went through the financial numbers and, yeah, I'm going to go back a couple and look. And I just, you know, I just feel like because we're in budget season, you know, I should be able to reach out to who is really going to be able to tell me on that.
Yeah, and I agree with that. I mean, we're all elected equally. I'm, Dan and I are the only ones on the board not sharing a committee. So ostensibly, under that scenario, Dan and I are the only ones who can't contact an administrator. And I think we're all adults and we should be allowed to, you know, communicate, you know, however we want.
So I guess what we talked about when this came up last time was the idea that there's 10 of us. And then there's, there's kind of just a few of them. And so if all 10 of us are asking them questions every day, or even in one day, they can't get their work done. So the question is, how do we manage that?
I mean, I think it's a.
Advocating for one way or another.
No, I just, it's a. It's a process, it's a management question, right? We've got, our staff has limited time. We have lots of curiosity and good, I mean, our questions are all, everybody's questions are good, good questions.
Kim, I don't want to put our administrators on the spot, but is it helpful? But I'm going to. Is it helpful for you, if you see 100 emails come in from the board, do you say, I know they know I'm going to get to it when I can, and I'll batch them to the, or is it helpful? I don't know, I'd like to ask who's impacted.
Batching would be very helpful. I'm saying, speaking for myself, probably speaking for Matt, for Mike, for Annie. Like, we, we want to respond to the board when they ask us a question, right? We respect you, they're good questions. There's a desire to try and get you answers right away. But I know, for example, if we're looking at Matt in finance, right now, he is steeped in trying to get the budget together. So I want him focused on that. And if there are good questions about details in the budget, and he's going now pulling off the work to focus on the big picture, and he's going and looking historically to find some answer, it's, he's not able to get the work done. So it's, it would be better if they came as a batch and then when he has time, he can go through. And the same thing for me, for any of the administrators. I don't know if you guys want to speak for yourselves, but honestly, it would be helpful. Because we do, we want to respond. It's just that, you know, we're busy working on something, something comes up from a board member, and the instinct is to say, okay, I need to try and answer that right away if I can.
I mean, I have, I have told myself, I mean, I, I think we're all very curious, very active, very aggressive people. And so I have to, like, I know I send you too many emails. I always think, oh, I shouldn't have sent them that one, it's a Sunday, can I wait? Can I wait till tomorrow? And, you know, so I know, this is for myself as well, I just think.
But basically what you're saying is, is that only certain people have the ability to email administrators and get answers right away. And those of us that don't chair a committee are not those. And I just feel you're tying our hands. I feel, you know, if I, I don't ask a lot of questions, and when I ask it, I don't want to go through anyone, right? We're all equal. And I don't think my answers, and I mean, there might be something I need to go to Annie for that is, or Steve, right, that's a confidential.
Of course.
Matter. And so I think just creating more red tape is just not the way to go.
Just remember too, that as, technically you should come through me to get to the staff because there will be a desire for them to try and answer those questions right away. And I need to know too, what's being, what's being asked.
Whatever works for you, Deb. I mean, we just need to have a process, right?
Right.
I don't.
I think the goal here is to get, questions are all good, we have an incredibly intelligent board and we want to be able to get that information. It's just, you're trying to move in one direction with a to-do list for the day, and then you're going over here, and then going over here, and you never seem to.
Okay, but intentionally or not, you know, you would be isolating certain members of the board.
Don't want to see that happen, right?
Right, I don't either.
But the other thing is, you know, I read the board minutes, you know, for our agendas on Saturday, you know, so that I can read it all. And then usually by Sunday, I send my questions because my goal is that when you come in on Monday, they're there. I am not expecting you to do it on Sunday. And so, you know, I do it on Sunday because that works for me, and then I feel you have time, so.
Can we make a different rule before a board meeting versus the rest of the month?
No, no, because I just feel like it, we don't all, we don't all sit at a desk nine to five and do work. I look at my board emails.
No, I'm saying to make it more flexible before a board meeting and allow more people to ask questions than maybe the rest of the month.
Yeah, so what I'm saying is, everybody looks at their email at completely different times.
And actually, Debbie, I figured something out. There is a delay of mailing your email. So I just figured this out because I, I find the same thing. I'm doing this, I'm doing board work when my kids are in bed, or I'm doing board work on the weekends, but I don't want to bombard people with this. So next to the send button on your email, there's a little down arrow, and you can actually schedule when you send it. So Annie probably has walked in on Monday at 8:15, so I'm giving away my secret time that I send. But to like, how did that?
That how you do it? I was wondering how, you were like, wow, she is, she's so smart. She's like, I've got so many issues, all in the space of 10 minutes.
Right, exactly. That's part of it. But honestly, I have realized I do send so much on the weekends.
Right, right, because that's.
So delaying your email may also be.
Although, I mean, I don't want to complicate things, but, you know, Susan made a good point and before a board meeting, actually, I appreciate the thoroughness with which you read the agenda.
Yes, I do too.
And I, I would.
We read everything.
Yeah, you do, and I would.
Well, you give it to me, I'm not going to prove things I don't read.
And you shouldn't. And I, and so I actually value having those questions in advance because you don't have a whole lot of time, right, between the week. So those are time-sensitive because we're about to vote on things.
Right, right. But sometimes there's other stuff that comes up from that.
Right.
But I'm not expecting you to do it on a Sunday at all. That's just what works for me, you know. I don't expect you to answer on Sunday. And I told this to Mike too, because he responded, I'm like, I don't expect that. But this is what works for me, so that you have all day Monday to, you know, you have time.
I'm just trying to think of how to help and support the staff with the volume. So one is, they could batch it, they could just collect everything and say, I'm going to do it, you know, two, three hours on Friday or something. But I think it's important for us also, whatever we do, to kind of signal what's truly urgent and what's a case where, you know, it's, if you could get to this in the next week or two, that would be really helpful. Because if everything's urgent, then there's no way they can, they can do their jobs.
Because sometimes there are important things that we're trying to do that aren't urgent. And that's the trade-off, that we sometimes don't get to the really important things because we're dealing with the urgent.
I think it's helpful, Debbie, I think it's helpful for them to hear from us, you know. We don't want you guys to respond, I mean, you always respond immediately, and it's like.
Not always.
But often you do. And often I have something too that's not urgent, but I know I need to tell you about it, and it's like, I don't really need to know immediately. And I try sometimes to say, not urgent, you know. But, yeah, I mean, when, when, when we talked with Jesse last year about this kind of process, I mean, the best practice, the recommendation was, because, because if we 10 are all deciding that what we need to have is immediate, we just can't, the organization can't function. So I just, I'm, you know, we just need to keep talking about this to make sure we're not weighing down our administrators with, with our attention. And we have lots of it.
And, but I also think as important is that you don't dilute the importance of the board, right? Our job is oversight. And so again, what might be important to me might not be important to you, but that doesn't make it any less important.
Well, I do think as a board, we're a collective, so, I mean, technically, NJSBA would say, well, we only give them, we give them their goals. We only talk to him, right? We don't talk to them ever.
To send all my emails to Steve, that's fine.
But, I guess, maybe that's where this is going.
Yep, that's fine.
But, you know, we, we manage Steve and we give him goals for his, to filter down to his organization. And at the same time, the reality is, we're 10 people and we hear what's going on in schools and we worry about things. But to give them new projects, and it's not necessarily a majority of the board deciding that, I mean.
I mean, it's answering a question, is that a project?
Yeah, well, each of us has our interests and.
I mean, some of us do though, have projects that get, right? So again, it goes back to all of us being, you know, equally, you're the board president, you speak for the board, you preside over meetings. Does it say that your emails are more important than mine?
No.
No, right, but you get to send an email whenever you want, and I don't. So that's my concern.
I don't, yeah, we've talked about this, I don't know what other people want to pitch in here.
I mean, I'm just thinking, it's about all of us being mindful of what is the best way for us to be communicating so that the district, that the district can function. And so sometimes, just because I'm the chair of a committee, it doesn't mean that I should be sending everything right away about that committee. But, but as the chair, I can, over a period of days, be collecting perspectives from the committee and holding on to them so that, based on my judgment about when it's sort of critical mass or, or a good compilation to forward, then I do that. But I don't, I think it shouldn't, I don't, I hope it doesn't feel like, as a committee chair, it just means that we have free rein to.
Well, fairer than I do.
Yes, I don't think about it. I mean, I just, I think what we're trying to do is be efficient as a board. And so, so I think of my, my communication role as a committee chair is, that's one way of maybe sort of grouping a set of issues together so that they're going to be shared efficiently without burdening our staff.
I'm all for efficiency, I just want to be treated equally.
And I will say, based on last year, I wasn't. So it's very hard for me to jump into this and say, oh yeah, I'll wait, I'll wait.
But we're all waiting, I think.
You're not, you didn't hear what I said, sorry. Based on what happened with me last year and some of the certain emails that I read, I was definitely marginalized. I was not part of the whole big group. And so it's hard for me to be able to do my job as a school board member. And so I need to, you know, figure out, before I can go to that other way, I need to make sure that I am still valued. And this is me, this is what, I'm speaking for me.
I guess, I, I guess my question is, what does this have to do with the kids? I, I, and, and you haven't heard, you haven't heard me saying anything because I, I manage a board and, and, and I'm him in another, in another place. And I don't want my board members talking to my staff. Because all it does is create confusion and, and people, you know, pushing in their priorities. If the way to get to staff is to go through him, then that's what we should do. As the chair, like my board chair, she can call me anytime because that's, you know, that's why she gets paid the big bucks. That's, that she is, she has that latitude to be able to do that. And so, it bothers me that people feel like they're being treated inequitably. That, that does not sit right with me. That, I know, I understand that, that that's how you feel. But I also understand that there are realities about getting things done so that we can do our job.
What wasn't working that things are being, that this board has been around for, I don't know, a long time, decades, what, what wasn't working that it needs to be, that it needs to be changed? Because if you look at it, right, all of a sudden, there's all these communications about how the board can communicate and, and who can say what and how. And I just don't, how does that serve the kids? Well, how does it serve the kids that we need to worry about how we communicate with each other?
But you, but the, I guess, see, I don't worry about that. I guess, I guess maybe that's the whole point, is that as much as it bothers me that you feel like you're being treated inequitably, but what the real question is, is it hindering you from getting the things done that you need to get done? If you're saying, wow, I didn't, I'm not getting my questions asked so I'm not able to function effectively as a board member, then, then that's a different issue. But if you're saying, I'm not getting my questions answered in the way I think other board members are getting their questions answered,
I'm not, my concern, I'm not concerned, I'm not concerned how anyone gets their questions answered. I'm concerned that when I have a question, it gets answered, that I don't have to go through another board member. I mean, again, we're all adults, I don't understand what the need is to control the conversation. And that's how I'm viewing it. And again, what was broken, right? That this, there's these radical, in my view, right, I was only off the board one year. What has changed in the year that there are, like, radical seemingly restrictions on how board members communicate? And I, I don't think it's necessary, I don't think it serves the kids. If now I have to think twice before I ask a question about what could be a potential, you know, potential liability to the district, how does that serve the kids?
But, but, but I don't, I don't think that that's, well, maybe I just see it differently because my first year on the board felt like admin. because my first year on the board felt like administrators spent a lot of time answering individual board members' questions. A lot of time. And so, and, and that's not the best use of their time. The best use of their time is doing what it is that they're supposed to do and establishing priorities that are determined by the superintendent. So if, as long as you can get your questions answered.
Right, and it hasn't been an issue. I'm just saying, I don't know why we have to ta, we're a group of adults. Like Brian said, if something's urgent, that's one thing. If it can wait, that's another thing. But I don't understand why we're going down this road when it's not, you know, and, when, when there doesn't seem to be a crisis.
Couple of things. I, I've not, just personally never been on a board where board members could communicate with, you know, any of the senior staff. It's, it's always been, everything goes through the CEO or executive director, and then the executive director and the board chair often say, look, if you're the chair of the facilities committee, and, you know, there are some, what's the agenda going to be, there are some questions I want to make sure get answered, that, that then the, the person in Steve's role would agree to that.
Right.
So that, and there were never any restrictions placed. We sat down and, and decided as a board.
Yes.
To work on governance, to work on best practices, and we voluntarily agreed to that practice. Hundred percent unanimous when we were do, in those meetings. And then when the agreement finally came time to memorialize it, there was some rethinking going on about parts of the agreement, but nothing was required. Everything was a, a mutual agreement of all 10 board members about, about appreciating what makes an effective board.
Right.
And the. Everybody has a right to information that they feel they need to do their jobs. I think it's a separate question about how quickly, what the expectation should be about how soon that information is provided, and whether there's some question about some is more important than another, some is more urgent than others. But, you know, there's some fundamental governance questions here about how a board does its job, and at the top of that is a respect for its function, which is not to administer, which is to govern, and to talk about process. And I don't think that the board had been doing that particularly well in the past. I thought we made good progress last year, but I think we still have a ways to go. And I don't think that going backwards helps in this respect.
Say that again in the mic.
I said, so it's as clear as mud. So I would go back to the superintendent and say, you know, I, I think of it from his, you know, he's the most senior person in the organization in terms of staff. And, and so I'm very concerned that he not get bogged down administratively. So I would encourage the board chairs to face off with their respective staff members. And I think it's very important that anyone who has a question get an answer to it in a reasonable ti, reasonable timeframe. I mean, I, I, I need information to, to, I'm analytical, and so I want data to analyze so I can perform my own independent judgment. It's not necessarily time-sensitive, except if we have a, a meeting coming up. But the process of the committee chairs working directly with their counterparts and, and not having to go through Steve, I think makes his time more valuable, and we want him to focus on his highest and best use, which I hope isn't administrative. It's more educational and inspirational.
But maybe that's what it is, is that we confer with our administrative counterparts and say, how, how would you like to receive information? Is, is, I mean, it would overwhelm me as a person to get 25 questions at once perhaps, but maybe that works. You know, batching also works, and, but I don't, I want everyone to feel though, that they really can, everyone here can ask questions.
But you're saying, what you're saying is, is that, you know, your email is more important, right?
No, I, actually, what I think, and I have to examine my own practice, Annie will attest to this. I send a lot of emails to Annie. I do. I think about this a lot. And so as I think to myself, okay, my, I'm going to start batching my own to her, right? So Monday mornings, but then I don't want to be Annie on Monday mornings, and I have 50 questions from the student achievement committee. And as, as you think about, you know, so we just have to, I'm not saying anyone's is more important. I think, I think there is a, there is a lot of board to administrative. We're asking a lot of our administrators, and that took a lot of time. And so how can we reduce the time? Maybe this is not the right, right way to reduce the time. But everyone has to feel that they're equally heard. So we have to figure out a solution.
And the other question is, how do we stay out of the weeds? How do we, how do we make sure that we're on the line of, on the side of what is appropriately governance and what is, well gee, I just want to know. And, and that's nice that you want to know, but that's not our job.
I think that's trust though, too, right?
But if you see the trust repeatedly breached, then, and, and when I came on, candidly, that's, that was my observation, that it was repeatedly breached.
Well, let's look forward. I think we're just talking a lot about the, like, let's look forward. We have a new year, a new board, right? So let's figure out how to do this together. And we have to trust each other that we're asking questions that need to be answered, so.
We also have a lot of new administrators, so, you know, before you would ask a question or something, and, you know, they had all this history, they'd give it. There's a lot of new people running things, and they're doing it differently too. So we sometimes need to ask a question. It was like, oh, that was done that way, and that's done this way. You know, Matt's going to present a very different budget than we saw from Stephanie and we saw from Tom, you know, because he has his own way. So of course, we're going to have questions, because, you know, I have all the sheets from the last ones, and it, it won't be the same. So I think because we have newer administrators, you know, we might ask more questions, because it's different, which is nothing wrong with different. And everybody is also very different in what they want to know, you know, that's going on. And that's just who we are.
As long as it's governance, it's fine.
That's why it's so important to have these, have our committees be really clear about what is the purpose of the committee? What are the goals of the committee? How is the committee going to operate? How are we going to share the information? And how are we going to converse with our administrators? I mean, that's part of the conversation. How is the committee going to get the work done? That's what we're doing. We're not just asking questions because personal, you know, it's not about, it's not personal.
No, I, believe me, my questions, yeah. That's not what I'm asking.
I think in the committee is a place where we can really clarify what, what the process needs to be in order for the committee to fulfill its purpose.
Yeah, I don't think we're trying to judge each other's questions. I really don't. I think this really is about what works to keep our people functioning efficiently and effectively and. So I think if there are individuals who feel that going through committee chairs is stifling somehow, then maybe you're going to get questions.
Well, yeah, and.
That's fine. I, I personally will, if I have a personal question, I, I would go to you. You know what's going on in that committee. I would send it to you first. You know, if I've got something to sack, I always send it to Betsy, because she knows what's going on, and I'm not going to waste any of their time, right? And same, whoever's got the committee, I, I give my stuff to them, because they're the ones. Well, that's what I'm saying. No, no, but, but.
No, she meant the, she meant the chair.
I'm saying what I do with my questions.
Under this scenario, I don't have the ability to ask a question, and where does my question fit in the queue? I just think whatever you do, everyone has to be treated equally. So if I'm only allowed to ask questions on Thursday, you're only allowed to ask questions on Thursday.
But I, I think we're mixing some things up here. The, I, I might do the same thing, try to go through the committee chairs. And I do that because I trust them to, if they already know the answer, they're going to, they don't need to, you know, bother, you know, Mike if it's something they talked about, you know, recently, or if it's an easy answer. And that I trust them to kind of like, you know, figure out how to convey the, the questions. And sometimes people have the same question, or it's asked different ways. And that I trust the committee chairs to, you know, make sure it gets, you know, that those questions, because we all do deserve to have, be able to ask our questions. We all do deserve to get answers to our question. This is not about being restrictive or anything. This is about just process, to, you know, be efficient with the, the staff time. And whether somebody's a committee chair or not, the, I would go through Debbie the same way anyone else would go through Debbie. So I don't see how that's particularly different. I, I think we're just really trying to figure out a way to be efficient with the staff time. And, and also, also to try to do a better job, because this has been a, a real serious challenge, of making sure that information that might be of interest to the whole board is shared with the whole board. And, and that's something that we need to think about as well. And I think committee chairs can be helpful there. I think the staff members can be helpful there, and I know you've been helpful. And I've gotten notes.
Well, when I spot something, I try to say, hey.
Right.
Send it to everybody, please. Well, I, I think this is a good conversation. I think we all kind of understand what we're trying to do. And some of us, you know, I think we just need to keep working on this. It's 10:20, and I want to respect our staff, who have to be in our morning, and the rest of us who have things to do early in the morning, so I, I don't.
We don't have to resolve it tonight, I mean.
No, I do. I appreciate the fact we had an honest, open conversation about it.
Yep.
I, I think if we can emphasize, if there's this way to get answers from the committee chairs, that, that if they have those answers, that helps. Keep in mind that the board directs me as the superintendent. And then I, I, my job is to direct the staff.
I will send all my questions to you.
So, and, great, if you want to copy me on those.
She said, direct it, they're directing it.
Okay, all right.
I mean, I've never not, I've never been to an administrator and not copied you on it.
I know, yeah, yeah.
I'm just, my mind is blown that this, we've been talking about this for 40 minutes. It's fine.
Well, let's get a good night's sleep.
Yeah, so I think, I think with that, can I have a motion to adjourn?
I have a motion to.
Dan, on favor.
It's my favorite motion of the day.